So we'll call this meeting to order as a work session slash retreat. I don't know if there's a formal agenda, but I noticed for the record that we're all here. And Mr. Hartgrove is in charge and I'm going to turn it over to him.
I'm not in charge, I'm just your navigator for the next couple of days. You guys are still city council, so. I'm, uh, thank you, uh, thank you for having me. My name is Charles Hartgrove. I'm the director of a Virginia Institute of Government. We're housed at the Weldon Cooper Center for Public Service at UVA. I'm actually based out of Richmond. So I'm not here in Charleston, we've had offices there for the institute for several years. Just so we can work with local and state government. I do want to take a couple of minutes. Just to chat about what we've been doing the next couple of days. So to your point, uh, the agenda is basically this. We're going to start with some conversations hopefully today about. On some priorities and things, we're going to start identifying those priorities. Uh, and hopefully as we get into tomorrow morning and as long as we need to go up to you all, it's your pleasure. We'll, we'll build some consensus hopefully amongst a group and then sort of come out of here with some actionable items. For both the short term and to make some very high level priorities to give for you guys to give staff guidance. So that's, that's my goal, working with you all over the next two days. I do want to take just a minute to introduce a couple of my colleagues that are joining me. Natalie Miller Moore, which is our, she's our strategic communications consultant at the Cooper Center. And Claire Downey, she's on our media team at the Cooper Center as well, so. To take up pictures as we get started. Alright, so first thing I want to do, just to sort of get us in the right headspace. And I don't know when you guys will be doing dinner and all that stuff, just tell me when to take a break. So these guys can eat. Just want to do a quick check in if you all. Just sort of get everybody, uh, co-list about why we're here. Really simple one, if you don't mind, entertaining me and just going around the table and telling me. Your favorite place to visit in the city can be. Any physical place in the city, I just want to hear where your favorite place to be is in the city. And I start with, start with you.
Yeah, my favorite place is currently under renovation. It's the Alderman Library at UVA. I love to go in the stacks there and walk around and try to find my dissertation at the bottom. But yeah, that's my favorite place.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Wade.
Um, I gosh, um, I guess that, um. A few years ago, when my daughter was small, it would have been the northeast parking park. Cause we went there a lot, but now I think I really enjoy. Walking the streets in the Tenth and Page area because I always see abundance of people on their porch. And I can speak to them, so it's not one place, it's enabled it, it's probably Tenth and Page.
Um. Yes, I would say, and kind of like, kind of like Vice Mayor Wade, it's changed over the years. Uh, but now I'm to the downtown mall. I, I work downtown, uh, but I work just off the mall. So when I walk onto the mall, I'm leaving work. But I always see people I know and people I get to talk to, it's a pretty environment and it's a chance to sort of get away.
Very good, thank you. Council McGill.
No wrong. I know, it's just, it's hard because there's some, there's, I mean. For so long, it's hard, um. And I don't leave my house much these days, so my backyard has been one of my favorite places.
There are a lot of those, yeah.
And my backyard has always been one of my favorite places, whether where I live now or whenever we've touched the page. And having cookouts and things with everybody coming over. I guess, I mean, Washington Park was always awesome because that's where I always had my daughters' or sons', um. Birthday parties and, or the Carver Rec Center where we used to go roller skating or. And there's just, there's, or I don't even know what's going on in the old Live Arts Building across the street anymore. That's where we had our wedding reception, so it's just, you know, there's every place that has good memories.
Very good, thank you. Council Payne.
Yeah, basement of City Hall. Not really.
Nice. Probably, um. Riverview, Riverview Park, the whole area of Riverview Park and the surrounding areas.
Sandy, very nice. Well, for what it's worth, in my, my visits to Charlottesville through years, I've always enjoyed the walk from the corner to the downtown mall. And just sort of seeing how that's grown through years and then obviously getting here to the mall and everything. Beautiful city, I always enjoyed it, so, alright. So we've got a few things to, to sort of get out of the way of what we want to accomplish. We've got a lot of it to have lived in, so I know that we've. Talked about a few of these things, or at least you guys have shared with me some of your thoughts. And I want to, uh, talk a little bit about that and get some initial feedback from you all as we sort of design our time today and tomorrow. So some of the, the highlights of what I've heard from council and then my brief conversations with staff in preparing for the next two days. Is, uh. How you can, number one, uh, build capacity for any organization, obviously finding stability in the organization. Then city staff, city leadership, uh, making sure that there is a very clear and open line of communication between council and senior staff. Back and forth, as there was clear understanding of guidelines and expectations. The other, some of the other things, we're making sure that, um. When, when decisions are being discussed or, or made, that we're looking through a lens of equity. And we're also looking at the impact of climate change and other issues like that throughout the community. Uh, and then also, uh, some of the more challenging issues that council has in front of it. Itself over the next few months, including, uh, the rezoning rewrite. Some of the things they're doing, uh, staff are navigating, uh, looking at, uh, competing interests. I think that was a term that I saw, obviously, every, every community has several budget needs they want to try to accomplish. But as we all know, you can't do everything at once. If that was the case, we wouldn't be here, you'd just make the decisions and go with it. So priority setting for you guys seems to be the biggest, the biggest challenge we have. The other part is, uh, making sure that, uh, there's a, an, an strong effort to, to rebuild trust with the community. Citizens, residents, uh, business community, nonprofits, any stakeholders here in the city. I, I heard that pretty consistently from folks. The other part, um, sort of looking at, um. Capacity needs, making sure that council is, is giving staff, uh, the, uh. The resources they need, uh, on everything from staffing, uh, to projects, et cetera. Let's see. Trying to making sure that, uh, policies and procedures, I talked about this earlier, guide, uh, what staff is doing is very clear. Some examples of that are making sure that we're, we're trying to reduce tensions and interactions, uh, for, for different projects. You know, there's always political conversations, lowercase p, uh, in the community that are challenging for folks and making sure that there's transparency. And why decisions are being made and how things get to council. And then sort of looking forward to things we just don't know about. We talked, I heard some, some concern about, obviously, the future of our, not only the local economy, but the national economy. With things going on abroad, but we obviously have no control over, but how that does impact, uh, folks here in your community. Looking at, uh, you know, possibly, hopefully that's not the case of recessions and what's the post-COVID landscape look like? As we all emerge out of this and what things look like for city staff and for community as a whole. Working with, uh, the new administration in Richmond and the journal, and your representatives in the Journal Assembly. Heard, heard that from a couple of folks is a, a huge issue, particularly on issues of equity, uh, from, from the state. And then, uh, sort of making sure that, uh, counselor, uh, counselor, city council and senior staff have a really good understanding of working with each other. And then, uh, obviously anything that we can do in the future at the Institute of Government, we'd love to continue to partner with the city. So that's, that's just sort of my, um. Very high level assessment of what I heard from you folks. I will give council the opportunity, uh, to refer to you, Mr. Mayor, uh, how you'd like to do this. If there's anything else that council would like to, uh, to share, uh, if I missed anything obvious you'd like to get out there initially. I'm happy to do that at this time, so then we can sort of really get into the, the listing of some opportunities for us to discuss and priorities moving forward. So that's, that's your pleasure, council.
Good for me, other folks.
Yeah, I, one thing, and this may be more of a tactical kind of operational type thing you could talk about at a separate time. But I really would like, at some point, to do some benchmarking. On the range of things and it's, we often hear from the community, I mean, pick. A dramatic example, right from the top, the police department, for instance, or taxation, or. Or you name it, you know, our, our real estate tax compared to other places, you know, where you can say, well, it's. Our real estate taxes are low, well, we have a higher median, um, household, uh, housing cost here too. So I don't know how you put all of those things, it's sort of apples to apples, but I think anything we can do to sort of. Uh, bring data to conversations and to say how we stand compared to other communities when we make, when we make decisions. Again, the policing came up just the other day and we got some feedback from people about how our police compared to others. And the more we dug, it's like, well, not really, in every situation, I think the mayor said this in the meeting the other day, every. Every city in every situation is its own sort of thing, so, um, I think. That's something I would be interested in, again, maybe later on, but I, I do think having some metrics about how we are compared to other localities. Or a range of topics would be helpful. Uh, it would, it would help me inform my thinking too, you know, on the question about taxation, for instance, you know, well. What is reasonable, um, because I want to be reasonable. So.
Yeah, and I just wanted to chime in on that, 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 you know, I found that my time on the school board is that we were, wanted to often be compared to other places and. And we're so unique that it's really difficult to find another school district, find another city to, you know. We, we have our own values and so some things we probably can't benchmark, but I think that I don't want to be tied to, to that. You know, CDA is doing this, so we need to do it, so, but it's good to understand that.
And I don't mean benchmarks, I'm like a constraining thing, just a comparison.
Yeah, no, no, that's fine. And you may have said this, sir, when you were talking, but I like to, it may be part of overall what we're doing as far as. You know, the reprioritizing, like, you know, our priorities and our vision, um, you know. This came up when we were looking at our vibrant community fund that we, um, you know, we want to. I, I would like to look at, again. What our priorities are for our nonprofit organizations and that may come out as we determine what our, um. New priorities are for the city, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think it covered it all, I would just add a short-term goal, like how can we position ourselves? Is there anything you can do to take as much advantage as possible over the, um, congressional legislation that's passed? Particularly the, the infrastructure law and. What is remaining to be allocated by the state from ortho.
Very good, thank you. Well, let's dig, let's, let's dig right in, shall we? Alright. So, um, like I said, I'm more of a stand-up and walk-around type of guy, so, uh, that's probably going to be doing most of the next two days. So one of the comments I heard from you guys, and obviously I just know because of my experience formerly being in, in town and city management. Budget time, you guys have probably processes of finalizing your budget, I think Mary mentioned this in his comments. What are things, what are decisions and things that have to be made from a very high level priority? So my, my goal here is not for us to dig down into minutia or into, you know, departments, things of that nature. I'm trying to keep it at a very high level at this point right now. To identify some things that you'd like to see happen potentially within the fiscal year, but it's going to be starting in July. So if there's any opportunities there, I'd love to sort of capture that and sort of think about that as we sort of have these discussions over the next two days. So, turn it back to you.
Yeah, I, I think that a lot of this, the staff has already been responsive to and I appreciate it. One of the things that was really important to me was that we pay our staff well, um, not only. Do you mean well is not even the right term, but try to keep up with. You know, the molly for the morale of the people here and not only because it's the right thing to do, but also if we want to have the, the, the highest quality staff. We need to be thoughtful in how we compensate. And so I was, I was gratified to see that was covered in this past budget. Totally increases.
One thing that I, I said last night, and I'll say again, I'm concerned that, uh. We know that our city staff capacity is down because number of employees is down. We also know that what it takes to be, um, a fully competent staff. In the fiscal year 2023 may well have changed from 2020 when we got elected, for example. And so one of the things that's important to me is. That we figure out, we council, city manager staff as well, figure out if there are things that are capacities that are lacking. There are skills or orientations that need to be brought in, uh, to help us do the kinds of things we want to do. And I, I was confronting, I was dealing with this, with this in particular because I was talking with. A few months ago, I was talking with a number of people who are particularly interested in getting involved with city. How, how the city was going to be dealing with climate change. And that's one of those issues that we've just kind of put off to the back burner for the last few years. And, but they're all saying, we want to get involved, we want to get involved right now. And part of the problem is, not only do we still have some organization to do at the, at the government level. As to how, how the city government is going to do what it needs to do. But the kind of civic input that people in the city want to be able to give. Requires more staff attention, more staff time, more staff capacity. So I suggested last night that the city managers, uh, the city managers should look at. Between now and the time we pass our actual budget next week, uh, see if there's anything else, any other capacity issues that we need to put into the budget. So that we can take advantage, I mean, I, I always say to people, Charlottesville's got fifty thousand people, forty thousand of them. Think they're the smartest people in the room, twenty thousand of them are probably right. We've got a lot of smart people here, let's use them, but that takes more staff time than, than just going in and doing it yourself.
I did note in a couple of the comments I received back from you guys that harnessing the, the knowledge and the feedback from the community on a lot of these big issues was, is a concern. Making sure that there's an effective process, there's a staff to help manage that, uh, and make sure you get all that information, so I appreciate that.
Um, I just, I, I. This is my, my first budget and I, I just think that we received a lot of, you know, emails and comments on various topics. And, and I think for the most part, the budget is addressing a lot of those concerns. We can't do everything for everyone, but I think we did pretty, pretty good. I mean, we haven't adopted yet, but I think we're heading in, in, in that direction and. And if you ask me that, maybe what, a month ago, I don't like, I don't know, you know, so.
Been a lot of creative energy in the last month.
Okay. Anything else for immediate? At least about immediate, the next, within the next ninety days?
I don't know how immediate really is. At least getting, at least getting a sense of our, um. Capacity in the beginning planned for these longer-term goals that we maybe have some fiscal room for, but aren't fully settled in terms of our long-term plans for. Transit, um, climate action plan implementation specifically. Just how can we and will we be positioned to be able to make those commitments in the coming years?
Michael, I. Is part of what you're saying with that, for instance, you know, taxation, questions about taxation we have now upcoming. Are we thinking four or five years from now, sort of having, thinking now about the funds we need for work we want to do four or five years from now? But part of what you're saying there.
Definitely that, um, and again, you know, at this point in the budget, we now have some fiscal room and out years retreated before. But we haven't yet fully incorporated or planned for, say, like six million dollars of matching funds to. Fifteen minute routes, so like, there's potentially, it's not a zero possibility for it, but we haven't incorporated that or fully planned for how we'll get there.
And I think that's fair, and we, we, we hear that from a lot of localities around the Commonwealth and beyond, just sort of making sure with all this federal money come down, but, but. That's great, that localities have this, uh, you know, one-time money for whether it be through ARPA or for BIL or whatever it is. But making sure if you don't have a staff to actually navigate those processes and, uh, manage all that money, that's, that's a huge issue. You can't get these big picture items done, alright.
That's exactly what I have here is a plan to navigate ARPA. Our Director of Finance has definitely got, he's, he's got a very good handle on ARPA from everything I can tell, as well as the reporting aspects of it. But we do have still a chunk of money and we need to come up, we need to have an inputs, come up with a plan of. How do we want to use that one-time funding in a way that's going to make a difference? We could keep piecemealing out and meeting emergent needs, or we could try to do one big thing with it. Neither is better than the other one. Or we could do a couple of medium things, it's, then there's also capacity to address the build back better opportunities, um. The way I'm understanding a lot of things right now, a lot of our grants are managed by independent departments. Because so many of the grants are technical grants. Um, and therefore it makes sense that the people who are in the technical know-how, know which grants they should be and how to administer them and how to. Report on them later, because all of those are different aspects of a grant. But with, you know, there's a whole new department of a combination department of transit, department of energy. It's, do we want council to spearhead that? Do we want the city manager's office to spearhead that? Do we want independent departments to spearhead things? You know, just having kind of a, a common. Agreement of. Who's going to take some responsibility for seeking this stuff out? And just like in, uh. Written down or, so we're all on the same page and all of that. So three people aren't going for one grant and a whole nother areas being left behind because everyone thinks somebody else is doing it. That's, you know. That's where I get anxiety a little bit is just, how do we make sure that with this flood coming down? That we try to optimize it the best we can, but also in a way that's not going to overwhelm us either. And get us in a situation where we've made too many obligations and can't actually meet them too. So that's just. And I don't know if vibrant communities goes in this, this part of the budget or not, and just what that needs to be reshaped as. So. That's a part of this budget because it's always brings tension, it always, um. It always. Staff has a great process that they work on with the community members to evaluate. And at this, then, because we have an entire meeting about this in the public eye, it gets very political. Um, and it's not based necessarily in the state of the application. Um. The expectations of the measures that we have said we want. Um. And how do we balance all of that in a way that does have the. The needs met by our community. As well as. Doesn't. As smoothly and as efficiently as possible.
Well, good news, one of the things we're going to leave with before we walk out here tomorrow are assignments and timeframes. So, uh, that's, that's a big part of this, right? You can't just say we're going to do these five things or we're doing really great, but not say, uh, okay, who's going to take, who's going to take the lead on that? Uh, and when is it going to be done by? And so I suspect, uh, when we finish up, you guys will probably have a couple of sets of those, like I said, so maybe some short-term things. Uh, for maybe the staff getting information for you on particular programs or for recommendations. And that's the beauty of the council managing former government, so, alright. Let's talk big picture. Listen, that, uh. I'm, uh, that, that says a lot about your, your budget is pretty well in good hands and set, so I'm glad to hear that, so that's, that's great news. Got a lot of issues to talk about, um, some of these things are. Easier to, uh, look as an actionable item, but you know, when you look at, uh, some of the higher things we talked about. Or you guys talked about, um, making sure of it, uh, looking through the lens of equity. So let's, let's talk, let's talk about what that looks like, uh, on a big picture item that you're looking at, whether it be affordable housing. Which obviously ties into the, the work that staff's doing on the zoning rewrite, uh, whether that's transit. Looking for, what does that mean, you know, looking at equity and transit, does that, uh, impacts on climate change? Let's talk about what you all think those things mean on these, these big, greater topics and start really digging into those. So when you say you're going to look through things, uh, through that lens of equity or looking through the lens of, um. I didn't, or, you know, acknowledging, uh, climate change, what does that mean in these big picture issues? That are in front of councils, are going to be in front of councils.
Well, for me. Climate change would be, how does a certain policy? How does a certain? When it comes forward to a vote? Um. When we make a decision on. Anything, climate change is at least thought about. It's like, does this mitigate, does this exacerbate, does it stay even? Um. Does this, um. And in one aspect. And just like we have on our agenda when it regards to budget. A box that says, how does this affect climate change in the community? How does this affect our commitment to, um, reducing our carbon footprint? We, a couple of years ago, the city of Charlottesville signed on to this, saying we were going to become climate neutral by a certain timeframe. So how does, how do, how does each decision affect that? Does it, sometimes it's going to be just like on the budget, this has no impact on the budget. Or this doesn't have anything to do with climate change. But at least if we're consciously looking at everything, every department. And I think equity is the same way, and I, I mean, and equity is, is all sorts of equity. It's like, so how does this bring equity forward? Um, does this address hearing impairment, does this address transgender, does this address BIPOC? Um. What form of equity does this address? And how? And maybe some things it doesn't, but at least we're starting to consciously think with every chance we get. That these are just as impactful as our budget is.
Yeah, that's the beauty about, uh, retreats with no agenda. Well, it may seem sort of crazy, but it gives you an opportunity to have these informal conversations and that's something I wanted. If it's okay with you, Mr. Mayor, councillors, I'd like to ask staff a couple of questions to help me out. So, uh. Council McGill talked about, uh, agenda items for council. When, when, uh, when those, when those agenda items are coming forth to council now, does, is that shown in the staff report? You know, here's the equity consideration, here's the, you know, like I said, there's always typically historically, most cities have a budget impact. Here's the budget impact of this in front of councils, what does that look like from you guys to them?
I, I, I think from, from what I've seen at this point, it's, it's, uh, if you look at budget impact, it's basically financial. And, uh, if you're going to, uh, require certain filters to be addressed. Then, you know, council says that and then. Then, you know, council says that and then every report that comes to council will have the. Boxes to check off with, with comment in terms of how does this proposal for new buses? At the, uh, transportation authority, impact our goals. Uh, for being climate neutral or carbon neutral by twenty thirty. Uh, or if, uh, if it's something on housing. How does this, uh, particular proposal address? The, uh, uh, the goal of fifteen hundred affordable houses by, by X date, et cetera. Then that, that would be the requirement and, and that would fall on staff, uh, on us and all the, the agency heads. To articulate that in, in, uh, the matters that we bring before council.
Alright, so, uh, let's see if we can, uh, uh, build some consensus here on, on what you want. When you get a report out from staff on these big ticket issues, uh, these themes, shall I say, across it? Cause I don't want to drive down into individual agenda items, obviously. Is there a consensus amongst council that you want these sort of, uh, dynamics reviewed? And these major, uh, agenda items when they come to you through that lens when in the staff reports or is that some? What is it you're looking for?
Well, I, I would think that that, that would be useful. One of the things that we've noticed is. At least I've noticed, every time we get, uh, a memo from the staff on something that we are supposed to be taking a vote on. It quite properly says, here are the specific goals, strategies, whatever in our comp plan that this relates to. Not really do we get, here is how choices might differ. Simply identifying what the, what the, the categories are. And I was just thinking a little bit about, just, you know, an example that I've, I've been thinking about a little bit. Is you've got the environmental folks who say, well, we should be getting the city out of the gas business. Shouldn't be, you know, on the other hand, gas is still the cheapest way to heat the house. Which poses problems for poor people. Which poses frankly, a differential impact on people of color versus white folks. So there's a, an equity piece to it that runs sort of counter to what we might think of as being a climate change piece. Point being simply saying this relates to this particular goal doesn't tell us how. And in some cases, the how may not be immediately apparent.
There is a practice that I've seen that. There's an strategic plan now that's been extended. And, and that's one thing you have to address, but I've seen that, uh. Staff tries to relate a particular action to a particular goal. You know, in, uh, in the strategic plan. I've asked myself, well, how helpful is that? What does it mean? You know, really, but it's, it's, but it's an exercise that, that staff goes and, uh. If we are to take it beyond that. Then the strategic plan should have specific goals with, with timelines on. And then council can address that this, uh, addresses strategic plan goal number one. And this action will facilitate movement toward that goal. In, you know, X, Y, Z, uh, years, et cetera. But that's not where we are now.
And that's particularly useful for things that can be quantified. An awful lot of what we do, we don't try to quantify. Maybe we shouldn't. Maybe some things are just not readily quantifiable and we shouldn't try to shoehorn. It into a, a quantifiable metric, but. We, we tend not to think about that. Not as much as we should.
Let's hear from some other members of council here.
So I, I think that, that, you know, what I'd like to see or, or know is like, we're talking about. The, the transfer routes, for example. We want to do it to every fifteen minutes or probably start up at every thirty minutes. We may not have all the. Funding to go for every thirty minutes for the entire system. But to me. Looking at this through an equi- equity lens that we want to look at the communities that are of maybe of low wealth. That may have the most impact, that may not have the op- as many options. That's what we want to maybe start off first. And, um, and. So I think that that's the type of information that we would like to, to see and, and some things as Lloyd mentioned. This community is so erudite that they will let us know some things. I mean, I got more information on progressive taxes. Then I think I, yeah, I think I can.
Education.
Yeah, yeah, you know, and so, but it was helpful because I, you know, you know, you know, that's okay. Well. It may impact tourists, but a lot of regular folk go there, you know. Local restaurants and things for dinner too. So it's, so. That, that information staff provide, you know, let, let us know that information as well, but it's so much. To factor in that you think you might know that may have an, an impact on, so. And, and it's, it's a lot because our community is getting more and more diverse. You know, we, you know, we used to think of the different languages that you want to have would be just English and Spanish. And, and now, you know, you have to think about, um, you know, we may have some, um. Ukrainians come in here, you know, I don't know what the future, you know.
RC is pretty big.
RC and, and, uh. So we, we need to think about that as well. It's that the community is becoming more of the, uh, the, uh, diverse. Than just kind of white, black, Hispanic, you know, ju- just kind of big picture speaking, so.
So one of the things that my mind went to and just listening to what I've heard last few minutes is, you know, obviously you want a budget for your pro- you want to show your priorities in your budget. You have to live within your means, right? You know, so that's, that's the obvious world we have to live in and that the community's becoming more global. Uh, and, and so those two things that you're trying to navigate and there's, there's a cost. To, to navigate when you're providing services to, to a diverse population. So, alright.
I think it would be. I'm sure that someone has done this, um, and Mr. Payne may have better, or Mr. Gill might have better. Knowledge of this than I do, but you, what, what does it look like to, to be for equity in a community like this? Again, you know, the notion of benchmarks or not benchmarks, but. Some sort of target and we mentioned fifteen hundred units and that's something we can think about, you know, wrap our mind around. And I'm sure people have, have done some of that thinking, but you know. Equity is, is one of those things is such a big, large, important topic that trying to make it real and actionable, I think is the struggle. And the good thing about Charlottesville, and I learned this when I did all my door knocking three years ago now, is. People in Charlottesville have really. I would say great values in terms of the things that they want. I, I rarely knocked on the door where someone's like, no, I don't care about equity or this or that or whatever. They, they did and people do care about that. They care about social justice. They care about righting past wrongs. Um, we live in a remarkable community in that respect. And so. I do like, um, seeing this idea of having some other lenses when we get. Items come to us and on our agenda packet. I, I know that that would be hard to sort of really parse into. A- and this is no. Fault of anyone, but when you have a strategic plan with a bunch of different items, it's really easy to sort of cherry pick and say, well, this fits this and this fits that. And, um. Staff doing the best they can with the strategic plan that we have, but sometimes it's like, well, I'm not really sure that that. Is doing a whole lot here, but maybe with a new strategic plan, um, that might change. So. Yeah, I mean, how you, go ahead.
I'm sorry, were you saying that, and that Sina wanted to have more eyes look at? Is that what you said?
Her point about having, you know, just like we have the, on our agenda packet, it says, this has no budget impact.
Oh.
Or.
You know, at the bottom where it says, how does this impact the budget? And it says how it does and said also have a box that says, how does this impact equity? How does this impact climate?
Yeah, and I, I don't, you know, climate would be, I think, a little more clear, but equity is. Putting some sort of targets around what are our equity goals for the next two years or whatever? What are practical things we think might advance that? And there are plenty of people in the community. Have given us input on those things and we can't do everything, but.
Yeah, yeah. So I, I think that we, we, you know, and this is the start of it, that we as a council want to make it clear that it's a priority. For us to address is that, you know, I'm thinking about something that, that, you know, where they're going to take down forty five trees or something as part of the. Friendship Corps project that, that's, you know, that the developer and community knows that. You know, that that's just not acceptable. You know, that, you know, as they were reviewing, it's like, no, you, I know we can't do this. That's what, what, that's why I want to get to that, that our goals for this is clear. And, um, and that it permeates to staff.
You, you want, uh, in that particular case. You want the determination on that development project that. Taking down forty five trees is inconsistent with our climate change goals. Is that, is that the filter that you want?
Right, right. And I understand that now it, it may be too late, but as they developing it from, from the beginning, that. Part of it is to, and, and, and I know that, that there's some good designers that can design. Around, you know, saving those trees. Cause now what's going to happen down the road is that it's either going to be more money to heat. The, include the, the, the homes and it's going to be, or more money to plant. Trees to replace them. So in the long run, we really, you know. It's, it's gonna, it's not really going to benefit, you know? And it's, that's just a small example. You know, I did planning for years and I know that the typical way to do it is. Clear it because it's easy and then build it back up. But, you know, if you can, you know, design around some of the. Older, more, um, seasoned trees that really would add benefit and value to, to the project. But that, that was just an example.
Alright, I'm, I'm hearing a lot of things that go back to the comments that I mentioned at the beginning about staff capacity. Cause a lot of these things are going to be driven by staff on a day-to-day basis, right? They're the ones who are going to be doing this work and coming back to you with, with information, best practices, what other communities are doing. Uh, what Charlottesville compares to in other communities often, when, when it's, when it's applicable. So let's talk about outside of FY twenty three. So we're going to just assume that it's July first, that budget's passed, it's incorporated. What this, what, what does council believe, uh, you need to invest in? And, you know, have staff come back to you and give you a, a recommendation on, here's the places where we don't have the capacity to do. These big, these big picture things. We don't have the capacity to navigate the processes in the community. To do the research, all those good things, make sure there's appropriate and, and enough citizen engagement and input. So let's talk about what that looks like. Cause I see staff capacity issues, but let's, let's really talk about what that is from your all's perspective. Things you've not addressed yet.
Um, it may require staff training, you know, to, to go back, um, you know, it hasn't been an opportunity to. To do a lot of training, you know, not only because we haven't been able to get out, but. Because of the COVID, but also because if they leave, they don't, they, they may be the only one in the office, you know, and it is. They just can't get away type of thing. So, and you know, I think that maybe over the next few years. As this art money is, is available, we may have to do some consulting or bring in some extra help or something. Just to help us maybe review plans or to help write grants or whatever.
Mr. City Manager, may I ask you a question, please? So, um, tell me. I know we're in still, it's obviously a transitional situation here, but. Tell me where staff is on sort of developing and looking at those long-term considerations for, where staff needs to grow. Uh, those types of things. Any, any insight that you think would be appropriate or applicable here?
I think that, uh. Ashley and Sam can share a minute. I think we are focusing on functions now. Like neighborhood services and, 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 uh, Sam is working to build capacity there. As I've met individually with, uh, some departments. I, I picked up a couple of, of areas where, where we need to, uh, enhance staff. You know, personnel was one. I mean, uh, human resource, uh, procurement, procurement was one. Where we, we added, uh, I suggested we add, uh, some support there. I was listening to, to Sina about, uh, uh, grants and. It might be that we need to look at a grants coordinator. You know, in, in the system, that someone that not only focus on grants, but be the source for. Uh, coordinating implementation in, in, in conjunction with the various, various apartments. A lot of jurisdictions have had, uh, a grants coordinator. As, as a key part of the, uh, uh, the operation and it served them well because it's. They've, they've, uh, worked on developing, um, uh, contacts with the state and federal government and, and tracking down. Funds that would help in particular projects in, in, in district and, uh. Uh, so, so that's, that's something that I picked, picked that up. There are other areas of Sam, Ashley. The, the whole equity area, Ashley needs help. You know, uh, frankly, in, in terms of building that area to, uh, so that there is a lens. What equity is about. I've been around long enough to know that, that when you. Uh, look at a routing of, of, of your, uh, of your buses. Bus system and there are some thirty minute routes and some fifteen minute routes. But the route that needs it most in the low income community, uh, mostly brown and black community. Where people are like, less likely to have cars, that's who needs a reprieve. And that's a decision that you can, you can make. You know, by increasing, uh, the number of buses in that area and that comes. That, that, that comes also with an investment, not just in equipment, but in also in terms of drivers, et cetera. Um, the, in, in terms of where we decide to put sidewalks. You know, that's an equity consideration as well and, and, uh. I think that, you know, just going through, uh, the C I P, looking at where we're spending our money. And, and raising the question and making, making sure. That every investment is looked at through, through an equity, equity lens and. It is one way to do it and, you know, we need some help, you know, defining that. Ashley, raise your hand.
I think that if you're thinking overall of staff, something else to consider is when there's a focus on adding more. Equitable, affordable housing. When there's a focus on, um, making sure that certain populations have things of what they need. There are other accoutrements that could come with the services that citizens provide to support individuals, for example, in affordable housing. That could be everything from, um, certain supports that maybe would be administered through our department of social services. To ensure that they have access to SNAP or TIPS as they continue to grow and move through, um, their life path as, as, as they're able. Uh, that could be adding additional supports to our home to hope or job center tasks. So those are some extra supports that we can think about that typically maybe don't get brought up. Because they are not, I'm going to call them a universal service. Um, with departments of social services, either you make the criteria to receive those services or you don't. But with something like, for example, um. Filing for a business permit, you can be a solo entrepreneur, striking out on your own and filing for your first permit. You can be a large conglomerate. So it touches more people. But what I hear is a very concerted, um, and deep perspective of wanting to be able to make sure that. Everyone not just survives in Charlottesville, but thrives. And some of that could come with a need to increase staffing in areas that aren't as visible. For the majority of the population, but are critical to continue to have people to thrive where we live. We're going to build housing. We want to make sure people have everything they need to succeed, right? Um, so that is an area that I would put a post-it note. Um, so that is an area that I would put a post-it note. For you all to consider as you think about, and that also is equity, making sure that we can have clinicians of color. Um, you've got to compete for those people. You can't just say, you know, I've met, I think in my existence. Four therapists of color, I have never had a physician of color. It's hard to find those individuals, so that also is something to think about, if you want an individual to come with that cultural competency, cultural humility. That may also be a different kind of staffing, maybe with a different, um, level of salary for that person to be able to come in. So, just some thoughts for me.
What I would offer is, um, the training concept is, is really twofold. There's an internal training and an external training that we also need to focus on. Um, right now, I'm not thinking that we are at a place that we're saying that the house is on fire and all of our staff is training. That will come where we will have completed that assessment, because our HR director, who we hope is coming very soon. We'll be able to make that assessment and determine what we're doing and where there may be some gaps. But as it relates to the internal side of it. Just even sitting here and listening to this part of the conversation, if we're going to. Adjust our preparation of agenda memos to take everything through a climate lens and an equity lens. We've got to retrain our whole of our staff to the point that those that are preparing those memos are even capable of doing that. It's not to say that they're not. But today, that is not an expectation for them, and we're needing to set that expectation. It is more important for us to make sure that we've captured every one of those priorities that you consider to be a lens. So that they can then be trained on how to do that, so I think that's part of the key element. For what we've got to make sure that we're tying everything to these priorities that get set by the five of you, that's why we keep pushing that word out ourselves. It's important for us to have that, because it then pushes all the way down through the organization.
And, and also, uh. Uh, I think you all will agree that, that, uh. We've gotten more than an ounce of blood out of, uh, Chrissy Hammer. And, and, and I, I think, uh. That's an area in budget where I'd, I'd like to see some additional. Uh, investment to, to support that function, because. We are only good at the, the, the data that we, we collect and we're able to, uh, analyze, so. You know, that, that, that's an area where, where as, as any God-fearing city manager has to. Support the finance people, right?
I think it's a really, I thought that comes to mind with that, um, is. For instance, with the Airbnbs, Mr. Divers, I think, I think I'm remembering this right, has said, look. I know there's more money on the table out there in terms of, you know, collecting, uh, for this. With, I don't have the staff to, to figure out what is out there and then to actually go about collecting it. And, you know, that's a way that you, you can see this as an investment, you may spend additional funds for an FTE to do that. But the rate of return in terms of. Additional revenue we, we bring in, I think would far offset that, so.
When I was city administrator of the district, I had, uh, on my staff. Um, my, my productivity center staff. These were MPA, MBA students, all with strong analytical skills. And I would deploy them out to agencies. To, uh, work with the departments to do the analytical work in, in some cases on, on very big projects. And, uh, I found that to be very, very useful, you know, in, in moving, uh, big projects. You know, in, in the district and having, building in that analytical capacity. Uh, as a part of the budget staff and the city manager's staff, I think would also help here in, uh, in, in Charlottesville. Something we can look at as we're looking at investing in operations.
Got no data, you don't have the data.
Right. I would add to it, going back to the earlier discussion a little bit. I would find the most valuable thing, like, I don't know what it would take us to get here, but being in a position where we're looking at. Our biggest, big picture priorities and underneath all of those is probably dozens of different policies. And from that figuring out what are the budget allocations and staff resources needed? To implement those policies, so we can start to plan. You know, multiple budget cycles, maybe we know we can't do it this year, but we can get there in three years, and we know we need this to do it. And that to me would be the most valuable thing is looking at where is our progress in implementing those policies that are all part of the big picture. Quite frankly, I don't think the agenda items that. Say like this connected to the, this connects to the conference at Plant Year, I don't think that's ever factored into my decision-making ones. Um, and, and I, I could definitely see it being the case that if we're just adding a new thing to do that process for. You can bend that to, to fit or not fit anything, so I don't know how valuable that is in and of itself. And I would agree, seems like the data is the critical thing to measure both our efficiency. And to measure what, what is our benchmark for success or failure? Are we making progress going backwards? Um, and how does that inform our investments? Um, because I think historically, we're very much a community that. Has lots of big ideas and we go through with some of the ideas and we think because the intention was good, that, you know. Everything's good, and then ten, fifteen years, we're back in the exact same situation we were, and we haven't made any progress on the goal we were looking to change. And so the final piece related to that is, I think. You know, I know one of our community advocates, Joy Johnson, says that we should stop using the word equity. Sometimes I almost agree with them, um. Because I think it's one of the most useless words we use, because we've never defined it. And we've never defined what success or failure is, if we're making progress, if we're going backwards, if we're staying in the same place. And so I think until we do that, um, I don't see. I think the first step is us defining what it is and defining what success or failure would look like. Uh, whether that is the local, um, racial we- wealth gap, homeownership rates, achievement gap, you know, I don't know all the metrics that would go into it.
And, and council, um, is it fair to say has not? Council adopted the equity and inclusion position in the city manager's office, but. There was not, uh, a resolution at council stating, this is what this means. In terms of values in the city and, and what we expect throughout the organization. That fair?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I can't imagine the staff would want to eliminate the guesswork of reading the tea leaves of, uh. The elected officials, I've never seen that be an issue before.
It is a delight.
Well, it is, I mean, and to Michael's point, it is a. I don't think it's a useless term, I know that you're not saying that, but I, I think it's, it's like one of those sort of rally around the flag, something. Equity as a concept, that you're, you're not just thinking about a person right here now, you're thinking about their life history, their family, everything takes. For them to be able to, as it were. Easier life circumstances. Um, and I, I think keeping that in mind is, is always important, but to his. To his point, you're fleshing out. We can't do everything, but what are the, the things that we want to really focus on in terms of equity? What are some, you know, priorities, what are some? We've done a lot, there's been a lot of good work about housing in, over the last few years, and I think. That went from just kind of a mantra to actually we've got an affordable housing plan now, and that's, you know. Um, kudos to the activists and kudos to folks like Mr. Payne in terms of really pushing that, I think that's something that went from. Oh, we need more housing to this is something real, we're doing things about it. So I, you know, I'd be interested in knowing, um, and I'm not sure that I would be the person to, to figure this out, but. You know, uh, someone like this, this Marshall could probably do this, but. Giving us some suggestions, like here's, here are five different ways that you could. Think about the wealth gap between, uh, a community that was on Prospect Avenue versus where I live in Locust Grove. You know, this is a very crude measure I'm using here, but, you know, here are five ways that you could sort of put a metric around how, um. What we need to do as a community to support folks from that area such that they're able to live best lives that they can, you know, and I don't. I, I'm sure there, I know there are policy wonks out there and policy experts who can say this is what you should do, these are the levers you should pull, but I, I can't, I don't know that. I, I'm usually when someone comes to me and says, you know, this is something that would add value, that I can think about it and make a decision based off of it, but. Um, that I think is something, I'm a consultant, or if we've got the staff capability, to someone help flesh that out, what, what that might look like. And it's, it's more than just, um. Race, it's other things as well, but, you know, I think we saw this with the schools, we're seeing it with a school project now. Uh, it's not just about, um, giving our kids the best schools they can have, these schools do a lot more than just educate. There are places for children to get social services, they need, uh, counseling, all kinds of other things, and so. Yeah, so I, I guess my point is that it's such an important topic, but operationalizing it is the challenge. And I don't have the skills or the knowledge to be able to say what that would look like. I don't know if we need to hire a consultant, we've got maybe just some more folks to help Ms. Marshall, but. I would be interested in what that looked like, um, you know, some, some scenarios or, or options.
So just tagging on what you said, and Michael, you mentioned, you know, Joy Johnson, who's, uh, you know, very sage and. Knows a, a lot about the community, she's also been challenging us to define affordable housing. And someone asked me the other day, well, what is it, and, and I found myself giving a long, complicated, you know, well. Different programs have different definition and things, so I felt like a polit- politician, you know, giving response, and so. Maybe part of it is that we as a councils divide what we mean as affordable. Do, do we have a definition of it?
There's, there's a definition of the affordable housing plan in another area.
Yeah.
And it calls for different investments, like zero, some percent of money going to zero, thirty percent, like thirty, fifty percent. It breaks it down by goal of homeownership versus rentals and whatnot.
So it says where we should put money.
Yeah, it has a goal for like what percent of money goes where.
There's no one-sentence definition.
But that, yeah, there's not.
There's a two-paragraph definition.
There's no way to, to write, write sound like.
Because money goes in different places. Yeah.
Well, and then you have different agencies in state and federal and. The financial organization, yes.
There's difference.
They mean, yeah. Like I was looking up the deeply affordable housing meant sixty to eighty percent AMI, and one thing that I was looking at, I was like, are you serious? How is that deeply affordable, but?
It depends on where you are. Let's, uh, if, if I can bring us back up just a little bit, if you don't mind. So I'm, I'm really happy that about an hour in, we're already in strategic impacts. Because that's what we're talking about, it's not just high-level concepts, it's what is this actually going on the ground? What does this look like in your operations, and how does that translate from the policy decisions and budget decisions you guys are making to what the city manager? And his team are trying to do, so I think that's, that's an excellent place for us to spend a little bit of time on. Because that's where we're on each road, right, literally transit and everything else, um, so. We don't need to, we don't need to define. Uh, equity or climate change for, for ourselves, but we do need to show, or at least have an idea, or at least have staff have an idea. What does that mean on the ground for you all, what does that physically look like in this community? In different neighborhoods, business districts and everything else. And so I think having that type of, of sort of guidance is, is not a bad, but I, I defer to the, the leadership to say that I'm, I'm on the, I'm on the right track.
Leadership.
Staff leadership. So, um, maybe we can talk a little bit about that for a bit.
So operational definitions?
Yeah, what, what, so, and I don't, I don't need you guys to get down into, you know. And, and the, go ahead, man. Dude?
This might be a good breaking point for.
That's, I'm, I'm, I'm absolutely fine about it, that's okay with council. Never seen food, like, uh, you know, these type of things go wrong, so. We'll do that, it's a pleasure, council.
Sure.
All right, we'll take a break. And get right back into this, thank you.
At the same time, we want to make sure we take advantage of this opportunity to be able not be in a formal meeting too.
Yeah.
This is a rare, a rare occasion. And I want staff to be able to get some feedback they need to help you all too, so. All right. Okay, welcome back, folks. When we were, when we took a break for dinner, we were starting to have, I think, a really good beginning of a conversation about, what does this actually look like in, not just theory, but on the ground here in Charlottesville, some of these big picture issues, and how does that translate into service delivery and operations for your, your team, your staff? So not just for what, but the how and when, okay? So, uh, let's go back to that. Uh, we were talking about not defining these big, big picture concepts like equity and what, what climate, what considering climate change looks like, and we're not talking about any more right now, at least at this point, about what agenda items look like, but what is strategic impact for these things? Uh, and then we can, we can start nail, we can start digging into some of these big picture items. I'd like to get to a point where we're starting to sketch out a list of priorities for us to consider, and maybe that'll be some of our focus either later this evening or first thing tomorrow of starting to build some consensus and narrow down these priorities. Okay. Does that sound good to you all?
Yeah.
All right. So, if I'm not mistaken, uh, staff was chatting a little bit about, we talked a little bit about some of the staffing needs over here, but you guys have already begun to identify, but we know if there might be some more in the future as you start to learn more about what these folks want. So let's go back to that a little bit and then, and build off that, uh, the city manager was talking about analytics and data and how important that is in decision-making for staff to bring recommendations to council. Then we can build on that a little bit and then see where that conversation goes a little bit into priorities. Is that, is that okay?
Yeah.
All right.
Part of that can be fulfilled, I think, from, uh, having a good pipeline, but, but for interns throughout the year, you know, tied in with the university, getting some public policy students to, uh, to work with us on, on those kinds of programs and, and continuing through the summer. We already have, uh, as we're working on getting a, uh, ICMA fellow for its budget, and ICMA fellow could, uh, depending on their seniority, you know, could actually be, uh, the focal point of building, uh, an, an intern team initially that would be, uh, focused on analytics for us. That's, that's an approach that would not cost a whole lot of money, of those things. Uh, what did you find we have to pay a fellow?
Uh, fellows, uh, on average earn anywhere between thirty-five to forty-five thousand dollars a year, uh, plus some travel for ICMA conferences. So it's for the talent that they're bringing, it is, uh, quite a fair salary, um, as well as access to benefits. So still quite a fair salary for being recent MPA, MP, graduates.
Sam, Chrissy, any, any other thoughts you have in terms of the analytical capacity that?
I mean, we could, when I look at the, the data analysis side of it, we have as an organization by department, and it's really as each department has prioritized it and they've been successful in, uh, allocating a staff person. We have a management analyst level as a position that tends to do some data analytics across different departments, but it's not every department. Is that fair to say? We, um, we probably need to evaluate where else we can do that so that each department can have that luxury of having that kind of analytical work. The piece that's missing just from hearing, uh, Mr. Rogers' example is them all even possibly coming together and building some synergy between that function because they're, they're siloed in the department focus, but there's no pulling it all together in any way. So I was just kind of thinking about that, uh, as, as maybe there's a way to convene them and see how we turn that into, uh, that example maybe to see if there's a different outcome that comes with it.
And, and Chrissy, there are some budget analysts in, in some departments throughout.
Yeah, but I, I think we use that term very broadly because that means very different things. Um, but yes, there are those titles.
What is a budget analyst?
Like that too. A lot of various functions are kind of morphed out in ways.
Well, that and the agencies up.
Yeah, but often that person, I'm thinking of human services specifically, a team member who recently retired really was brought in to do performance management and analytics, but because of their needs ended up doing more direct service work. So they were not able to complete that kind of robust data work that, um, you all have mentioned. Even though that person was hired to do that work and has the skills, but they also happen to have talents to be able to do some direct service work. They needed that. So that person's job ended up getting morphed out of data analysis and into more hands-on work with the community.
Councilor McGill had a question.
Oh, I just said, what is budget analysis? I mean, in a practical sense. I mean, I know it means, you know, analyzing the budget, but in what way are we analyzing the budget?
The position, the budget analyst position, yeah?
Budget analyst.
You know, so in the budget office, I think a budget analyst is we're looking at everything about the budget revenues, expenditures, what does that mean? What do these, I mean, a lot of the stuff we're sort of doing in these work sessions, that's what we're doing. Um, there's, you know, a budget analyst in public works, for example, who spends all of his time looking at that budget um, and analyzing sort of their expenses, doing projections. Um, you know, we, the other thing I wanted to mention is in, um, response to Counselor Payne's comments earlier about sort of setting benchmarks and, and getting the data and the measurements, we have that framework in place already. Um, we have a system called Clear Point, and when we first did the strategic plan, um, a lot of those memos were much more, um, granular in terms of that agenda item about the strategic plan. It actually drilled down to specific measures. Um, and so, you know, as you all think about that, or, um, as you figure out what those are, we already have that framework that, um, it's actually what's driving that very old outdated strategic planning page that's on our website. Clear Point is what drives that. Um, and if you actually went in there, you'll see, you know, tons of measure, individual data measures. Um, and so once you sort of set what those things are that you want to see, we can, we have the ability to, you know, roll that out with scorecards and provide you with that data. So just something to keep in mind as you work through this process.
I just remembered that, um, this goes, goes back to the conversation we had, had, had earlier this morning. In social services, uh, there's a need for, say, a social, master's level social worker. And that could help on some of these issues of like we're dealing with homelessness and, and the wraparound services needed there because we had the conversation about the concentration of people, you know, in front of, of City Hall and, and the services that they need and, and uh, to, uh, to relocate, you know, to support them. And so, uh, that social worker, it seems, needs, needs to be, uh, added to the budget so that that can be, uh, that can be accomplished.
Equity in action. Right.
Okay. I would be interested in the, you call it clear point, is that what you mean? I would be interested, so that's like a, a framework sort of behind the scenes and do we have a contract with them where we could say, hey, these, these are how we want to change strategic plans, in other words?
We have the ability in-house to build that out. Um, they certainly are partners and help us with that, but um, it is the framework and it, it, you know, as you work through whatever you want your goals and measures and initiatives to be, it is that, it's exactly that framework. That's what it's built to do.
Is there a way, you know, we could have, maybe we do already have access to it, to, uh, make suggestions or could we just go like a printout or something where we could sort of fill it? And I'd be interested in seeing that in one, one place so I could understand what, you know, five years ago perhaps was sort of the plan.
I can make you all users and give you, you know, whatever access you, do you access, I'm assuming is what you'd want, but I can,
Yeah.
I can give you, um, all access and then, you know, even a quick tutorial if you want to just take a peek in there. So the way it was, was we had, I'm, I'm sorry, I won't take up too much time, but we had departments build out their own scorecards so that they track things that they wanted to at the department level, but then it also rolls up to a citywide scorecard, which speaks more to the council level of what your initiatives and goals are. Um, and it actually drills down to specific measures.
Do the departments use it?
So we were using it a lot until we got to the point when we were ready to refresh the plan and quite frankly, it's died.
Okay. That was the sense I got when I was in some of it, like good work had happened, but it, it had kind of gone stale, which happens with strategic plans. I mean, you, you get one done and you make some headway and then things kind of go into stasis and.
I remember the city of promise was a measurement on one area. Cause when we did this in twenty twenty, we looked a lot of, we looked at some of the Clear Point stuff, or that we had some printouts that we had, um.
Yeah, I mean, talking about staff capacity, so that kind of, um, went through several variations. It started out with a, um, staff team who, um, it was led by, um, the deputy city manager at the time, and we had a couple of meetings with council, kind of like what you're doing here. And council gave input on what they thought their, um, goals or initiatives might be. Staff took that information and sort of, you know, molded it into what we thought we heard, and then we kind of went back through a series of meetings back with council, and that's how the plan got adopted. Um, for implementation, we had, um, a very cross re, uh, section of staff from all levels of the organization that worked on that. What we found was it was hard for, you know, um, a staff, you know, I was an accountant in finance at the time. It was hard for me to go to Mr. Sanders, the department head, and say, you didn't do your scorecard and your folks aren't doing it. Um, and so there wasn't a buy-in at sort of the lead team level, so we redid the team and it was more sort of a, uh, lead team-led, team, and then that, you know, that worked, but then we kind of dwindled down to sort of a cabinet. Um, but the, in terms of staff capacity, we did it all through volunteer, so, um, it's an extra.
Sure.
It's, so where we had landed, um, right before this all kind of died and before this Overguard left was that, um, we were looking to hire a staff person who would be responsible for the strategic plan. Um, and I know we talked something about similar to that. It, there was some variations, I think, with that measurements and solutions person. Um, but if that's where we're headed, that's, that's probably a good source that, and that person has to have sort of the voice of the city manager because they've got to be the one that, you know, if, if that person comes to you and says you need to build out your department's scorecard, they need to know that that's because the city manager said you need to build out your scorecard. So just food for thought.
No, I think that's really, really valuable, not the city manager, but it would be helpful to me if, you know, if there was a way to sort of have departments update the best they can. I realize, you know, I'm in an organization myself at my job and you've got all your main activities you're trying to do and someone says, oh, you need to keep up with this, this strategic plan. They're like, okay, whatever, right? You know, it would be awesome if, uh, we could maybe get an update or refresh of where people think they are. And then I would love to take that personally, just kind of drill in it because it would, it would also help me understand how the organization works. I think I can make better decisions and then I would probably use that myself to say, okay, well, here are some things I would want to add to it, you know? I, I don't know that, I'm interested in rebuilding something from scratch for sure, but, that would be helpful to me.
I think as a staff person, my, my recommendation though is for that to be useful. It's something that council needs to sort of, um, be the drive. So as staff, we need to understand like what are your goals? Um, and what are the things that are important to you? And then let staff come back and say, okay, well, here's how we can help you meet that. Or here are the things we're already doing. Um, so for example, you know, we had goal number two for a healthy family, I mean, city, blah, blah, blah. Um, you know, it's easy for social services and, um, human services, they've got a million measures that do that. And so the other thing is, you know, budget and finance is not so glamorous. City Attorney's Office, we're not so glamorous. We just are doing things that have to be done.
I beg to differ.
But you know, it's hard to come up with measures, like no one cares that,
Yeah, sure.
you know? It's not as fun as, how many fire deaths did you prevent, right? But, or how many miles of streets did you pave or whatever that might be. So, yeah, but I mean, you know, I think it, it's hard to say, hey, staff, go build out where you are if we don't know where we're headed. And so it's kind of, it's better if it can come from the top, like council, here's, here's where we are. Here's what's important to us and then let us come to you.
Yeah, and I hear that. That makes a lot of sense, but for me as a newbie coming in, it would, when people ask me my, my priorities, there's a whole number of things that I can, you know, ran on, right? But it's also just honoring the organization and also because there's so much I don't know and you're already doing so much work already. And I'm not specifically saying go update your system or whatever, but, but even having a sense of what these scorecards are, where you were three years ago, even if that's the last time you updated. Where you were three years ago, even if that's the last time you updated them, that would be helpful to me. Because, you know, I, I do have a set of priorities, because I, I ran on those, but. Your, your priorities change as you get new information, so that would be helpful to me personally.
The governing part gets a little bit different from the uh, running for office part.
It is, yeah.
Let's talk about that a little bit, um, setting council up for success as you enter into updating strategic plan. Uh, because that's something you're going to be doing uh, very soon, I would imagine.
Yeah.
Um, and obviously, you, you've at least, you're not starting from scratch per se, you've got something to work from what you had a few years ago, but obviously. Things have changed drastically in our world and here in the city since two thousand eighteen, uh, so. Uh, what I'd like to do is take some time to hear from each of you guys on, and this is really more you communicating to staff. Like uh, Ms. Sam will just mention there, on, on some of your thoughts of strategic plan process, what you want it to look like, but also back to some points you talked about. And some of your questionnaires about capacity and everything else, your expectations, and that might help them make the best decisions possible to see you've got the information you need, so. Um, as, as you guys enter into strategic planning update process, um, what are the things that you're looking for to make those decisions so you can coalesce as a group?
Well, um, I kind of mentioned this a little bit, that I would like. At least part of our focus for our funding for nonprofits to um. To kind of go towards programs that are working with youth, I think if we put some resources, you know, to our youth. Towards mentoring or in an early stage that we may not have to put as much into drug court and things down the road, not that we wouldn't fund them, but. You, you know, um, I just, I, I just don't think it, it doesn't seem logical that we not fund some of the mentoring, not. We do, but. But that, that would be my, my focus, I mean, one of the areas that I would like the strategic plan to address. Um, additionally, that I've found that during this process of trying to figure out how to fund schools and affordable housing and things that. We looked at our projects. That many of the projects seem like we have on our list in the CIP, they um. They've been on there for a long time and I'm not sure if they are ever going to get um, done and um. And I'm particularly thinking about the transportation ones, because I used to do this in my role as a transportation planner. That, you know, um, we only put things in there and we would fund them out, um, and we would give. The board supervisors or, in this case, the city councillors, quarterly updates and say, you know, where, where it is, I think that will hold. Oh, um, it held me accountable, it's like, wh- what was held up and many times I would tell my supervisor and. And they would then report it out and, and sometimes it, you know, it would take. Some supervisors, something, contacting people in Richmond or Corpep or something like that. Because we found out where the hiccup was in, in that project and I, I just think that. And maybe we, we do that, but maybe I'm just too early in the process, but I just saw there's a lot of projects that we have. That I'm not sure if we ever, ever going to do.
I like to call those unicorns, so every CIP has got things that are realistically going to happen. While you are on council and, you know, three to five years, you're going to see these things happen, but you've got the list of placeholders. They may not happen while you guys are on council, it may not happen in ten years, but they still need to be in there for a sense of their placeholders for project. There could be an economic development thing that comes along, but, you know, but yes, there's an understanding, but it's, these are not going to be funded immediately.
Right, but Charles, what, what I'm not sure of is that if we are. If that project is planned for seven years down the road and we're putting. You know, um, we have a, or it may not ever get done, but. We have a significant amount or some money towards it, we could couple that. Money together and it, it could be, you know, for different projects and it could be a significant amount, I don't know.
Long-term investment.
One side of hearing is that um. Counsel is not getting enough. Uh, feedback or status reports on the CIP. And that you, and, and so it's hard for you to know where things are. And, and um, so I think we can, that, that's, that's something that we can correct. You know, and, and um, I get more information to you on, on the status of projects. And where they're going, and e- even if, you know, if we said this project had moved, because we don't have enough project managers, we could, we ought to be able to tell you that.
Well, and we've got, yeah, Christie said, do we have sixty-six million dollars on. Uh, a project on the authorized but not issued list for bonds. Every one of those sixty-six million dollars was approved by council before any of us were on council. We don't know what those projects are, we were not a part of the decision. Uh, and the model that I have suggested that we, we asked the staff to use. Is the model that uh, I saw when I was on, two years on the board of the Rivana Water and Sewer Authority. Where they've got a thirty-five-year capital plan of every pipeline, every sewer, every dam. That they want to build for the next thirty-five years, because of course they are required by state law to have a capital plan that, that looks that far forward. Every quarter, we get a report as part of our packet. You know, for all sixty-two or however many it is, projects that are on the list. Even though they're not going to happen till two thousand thirty-seven, it's on there for two thousand thirty-seven and here's the status and it's still on there for twenty thirty-seven, that's fine. That would at least give us a way of knowing uh, quarter to quarter. What, what we approved in the past, when it's coming up, when it's planned for, if there's, and, and to be able to confront. A problem soon, rather than, rather than the situation we're seeing now, some of the things on the ABNI list. We're recognizing realistically aren't going to get filled.
And this, this plays to, I think, one of your comments, so you shared with me of um. You'd seen another locality in Northern Virginia that had laid out the council's calendar to sort of identify well in advance. You know, this month we're going to focus on the CIP, I mean, there's always going to be action agendas, but if you have a work session, this is, you know, in a calendar year, this is what you guys are going to tackle. Month by month, in general, we're repeating things, so a quarterly. You know, update on September, whatever that is, but, you know, trying to give you guys some consistency to that, so it's in front of.
That, that's a, that's a, a good point, but just so to be clear. What I was really getting at is, it is either Arlington or Alexandria, I was looking at comprehensive plans and. And strategic planning processes a year or so ago, and I saw one of those jurisdictions, they put a, they have a, a retreat at the beginning of the year. Like most folks do, and they plan out their, what they expect to focus on month by month through the year. So that we know, for example, that in, in August, we're going to be talking about. Programs for youth, so it was something like that, and everybody knows that they've got to be getting their information in. On that timeline and everybody on council can say, okay, come August, where I know what we're going to be talking about. It, I think it probably convey, at least conveys the impression that they know what they're doing.
Yeah.
It gives you a chance to also better inform your budget process, because you're not just pushing everything into that one conversation.
I, I, I call it establishing a cadence. You know, for, for government, so, you know, you're, you're laying out what a year. Uh, what we're going to bring to council, so staff can, can prepare and work to that end. Whether it's the capital budget, or whether it's climate plan, or whether it's, you know, the housing plan. We know that in September or October, you're up, so these are the things you've got to do to plan to be ready for that. So, I, I, I think I, I get that.
And related to that, but in twenty twenty, of course, in twenty twenty was the first year that two of us were elected. And we came on council and of course, right away we had COVID. And then that was in March, and then come May, George Floyd was killed. And the summer was spent in protests and, and all that kind of stuff. And one of the discussions that people wanted to have in May was defund the police. Well, we had already approved the budget.
Right.
For the coming year, this was not the time to have had to have had that detailed discussion. And I said to everybody then, the time for us to be having that discussion is in August and September and October. Not in May, please, that's absolutely the wrong time, but let's have that discussion in August, September. And for whatever reason, I mean, there's a lot of reasons you can talk about if we have to, but it didn't happen.
Right.
Uh, the point is, that's the time to be having those discussions, not in February and March.
And just quickly, just to, to tag on that, I think that, like, we're talking about those projects, I think. Before, before we start getting those quarterly report, I would like to have a meeting just so we could. A work session or something, we can quickly go down each project, just say, this is what this project is. I think it's a good shot, we're going to do it, we're starting to fund it, but maybe when we get to project fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, it's like a little bit iffy. And, but we already have, you know, X amount of dollars allocated to it, maybe that's a discussion we could have to say, you know, if it's not going to get done. Maybe we can use this opportunity to reallocate those funds. Or keep on trucking on where we're going and um, and so I do like the idea of kind of knowing what we're going to do, that's the way we function. On the school board, we knew that October meeting, we, we got the state scores back for reading. And that meeting was devoted to that, you know, each meeting had a report that staff knew. That they had to prepare for annually, so, yep, I, I like that idea.
That's fair, to your point earlier, you, you're, you're inheriting a lot of things from previous councils, and so it's, it's fair to you all that.
Inherit from us.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
And so, how do we, how do we keep that education and consistency? So that people understand what it is they're voting on and what's hindering them from, you know, and. So that, like, I. The, the fifteen million in the, in the baseline of the budget there, it was like, I was a little confused about that at first, I thought that was new stuff.
Almost got me confused.
I'm good at that.
Nah.
But, um, but it's, yeah, it's, so that, that's a lot of money that we have, that previous people have committed. We've put some into that as well, recent, in the last year or two, and. Is it still relevant? Is it still necessary? Is it able to be done? And I know the information's got to be there someplace, it's just, maybe it's also that. This is also eventually put up online with the others and as to why the importance of each project is.
So.
Um, because that's important.
So, a couple of things um, about that is this is really timely, because we actually do send out right before a bond sale. Um, we go into SAP, we pr- uh, create this spreadsheet and it lists every single project. Um, at the budget, what's encumbered, what's been spent and what's still available. We send that out to the project managers and we say, hey, you know, what are you planning on spending through the rest of the year? We ask for an update on each of those projects. Um, and then that data comes back and that's what we use to compile and size the bond. I'm actually getting ready to send that out on Monday. Um, because we're getting ready to ramp up for a bond sale in June, so. We'll, we'll have that information and if there's other information that you want, we can get that. The thing, uh, just two things on the CIP and then I'll leave this alone, but. One is, you know, there are a lot of budget dollars that are in the CIP. They don't necessarily translate to cash though, because when VDOT changed their model, VDOT is one thing. That is consuming a tremendous amount of dollars in our CIP. Um, because they changed their model with how they do it, right? They say, we're going to put these projects in the six-year plan and we're giving you a little bit here, a little bit here, a little bit here, a little bit here. And in order to get that, you've got to do the match, and so, we've got a lot of budget in there that's really state and federal dollars. That if that doesn't materialize, that's just gone. Um, and so, we got into a mindset for a while that, oh my gosh, this is free money. And a lot of things got put into the pro- into the CIP before they were ever fully baked. And to sort of leverage this free money that's not really free. So, to um, counselor, um, your point is that we do need to go through that. Because a lot of those projects maybe aren't where we want to be now, um, and so, is there a cleanup to do? Absolutely.
Now, add that there is good news, um, that's coming, that's already being done. The work on, on BDOT project specifically uh, has been active for the past few weeks. And I will hopefully begin to see a, a glimpse of it next week. And then we are actually going to be having a, a work session with BDOT later this month, and I will be coming to you. To relook at all of the prior commitments and we will be retooling and right sizing.
So, Sam and Ashley, they're just cleaning up stuff that, you know, in the background, I should.
Not tooting any horns, but just saying, we, we did it and we're, that's what we've been doing all this time, is trying to figure out what is off the mark. And what's not necessarily performing ideally. And all of this was just even in coming in and asking the questions of, well, tell me about it, and it's not just readily available. Is why all this is happening at this moment. Yeah, I think a really great example of the value this is going to add, if we could get our, something is. You know, core competency of local government should be doing sidewalks. And it is, it's interesting when we have um, folks in the activist community. The things that they'll bring up are these things like sidewalks, because they have very practical effects on. Folks with, with needs and I'm trying to make Charlotte a place that um, is livable. Is, is the term, and so, for instance, what we just, what we are facing now at Stribling Avenue. One might have hoped that, you know, in years past, that there had been a better sort of plan for how CIP is managed and how these projects are done. That maybe, maybe I'm hoping too much, but perhaps we wouldn't be at this kind of um. Traffic jam, so to speak, with getting that development, and we want to get that development done, because it brings housing to the community, it's a good thing to do. But um. This is, this is encouraging, because I'm, I'm hopeful that, you know, five or ten years from now, we'll have other opportunities come up like Stribling. And we won't have to say, well, we don't have the sidewalks or the infrastructure there. So, this really is, it's an interesting point where uh, something is, is basic as, you know. Managing your CIP, your project list has real-world equity impacts in terms of being able to do more housing. And so, um, yeah, I'm glad to hear all of those things.
Sidewalk, very much like public transportation, yes, absolutely.
Yeah, and they're not glamorous and they're not like, you know, um, they're very important.
Either, but, yeah, but necessary. Also contributes to stormwater drainage, all those things, curb and gutter, storm drop inlets, all that good stuff, all that good local government or stuff I enjoy, so yes. If, if I can come back, I want to hear a little bit more from Council McGill, but I'd like to hear from Council Payne, but I'll come back to you, Council Payne. We wrap up this conversation and move on, is that okay for everyone? And if there's anything else, I'll give everybody a chance, last call, let Dan before you move on. Madam?
I forgot what we were talking about.
You had a ha-ha moment over there, I saw your face.
Oh, no, that was, uh, oh, no, that was about Stribling Avenue and the safer streets grant. And possible stormwater EPA grants. So, that's, that's my notes in there, um. I, I, I make notes up to my, when all the different pieces come together and then coalesce and then. I make a note to, to email Sam later.
Absolutely.
Um, strategic impacts. Um, let Michael talk.
I'm trying to force you all into anything, yeah, about me, yeah, yeah.
I think similar to just these other counselors have said, um, to me, a priority is, is. Being able to be positioned um, to before our budget season began. Having had enough discussions that we have clarity on. What we can fund this year, what we can prepare to fund in upcoming fiscal years, and particularly what staff positions. Um, we need to invest in, um, or what other investments we need to make. Um, because as others have already said, you know, it certainly seems like we sort of, each budget cycle, um. Whatever happens to be mentioned the most during those couple months is what gets the attention and there's no. Um, integrated or long-term strategy about, well, we're making this investment right now so we can achieve this in three years.
No, I think your last statement is actually very apropos in a lot of communities, uh, you know, what's the hot topic button? That just happens to be coming along during budget season when staff is all on one, but wait, look over here, remember this? We've got all these things and they've still got to get funded, yes, and that's huge, I think having that sort of drawn out and followed along for you there is very important.
I would also like to make sure that we're not forgetting ourselves. Um, the last four or five years in particular.
Um, the last four or five years in particular. Have, I mean, since twenty seventeen, our staff have gone through a lot. Um, it's been crisis after crisis after crisis. There's been a lot of turnover. Um. And. There's, you know, pay equity issues across, you know, there's. We want to be looking at unionizing, um. So. In order to serve the city, we have to have. Good people serving the city. Um, and we need to make sure those people are paid well and respected. And are feeling also that they are respected and valued. So this is because if that's all rocky, everything else starts cracking too. Um, and I really think. That is something that needs to be nurtured and. You know, we're trying to do various things in different ways, but I would also, you know, I think our staff would, I think it would be great to hear from our staff. Um, how we are doing and maybe in a few months, having a survey across the entire. Every department about how they feel honestly, and it could be totally and utterly. Anonymous so that nobody feels reciprocity. Um, but how they're feeling and what ideas they have to make things better or. And of course, it's, I mean, it's gonna go all over the place and that's, everyone's got different wants and needs and um. But I do still feel that there's a very real. Importance that our staff across the board feel honored and valued.
If if I may, just for a minute, counsel, I I'd like to go ahead and at least start throwing this up on the separate sheet here. I feel like I've heard a fairly good consensus, but I want to confirm view that staff stability and resilience is a key priority for council. Is that, is that a fair statement? Is that, is that, is all, are all five of you in agreement of that in general? All right, all right, all right, make it.
Let me.
Please.
Um, staff resilience is is critical and uh. Uh, Counselor McGill was was saying that um it's important to staff, you know, be respected, et cetera. Uh, that's very true. You know, what happens in terms of the interaction uh with staff of of at council meetings. Uh, since signals, you know, throughout the, you know, throughout the organization. And uh, I I just have to say that that in my tenure here, I've been very pleased with the interaction. And I think people are beginning to see um a different in tone and interaction with between uh staff and councils that existed. Uh, previously, and that's, that's a very good thing. And uh, we are, we we're kicking off uh the citywide employee survey. That'll be conducted by the uh Center for Survey Research, the UVA. And uh, we should have, uh, I guess based on the schedule now, should have that feedback uh by July.
Early June.
Early June, early June, yeah. And and so then we can see what they say. And then see what we have to do in order to make some movement in in terms of the number. But I think establishing the practice of getting back to the practice of doing an employee survey every, every two years. Is is a, is a best practice and and something we should should be doing, but I think it'll go a long way.
And it kicks off later this month.
Yes.
We have a very diverse, educated, smart, good staff throughout the city. And, you know, I I'm I'm, I just, I want them to know that they're appreciated. And we talk about the community all the time and we are all serving the community as a whole, but our staff are also part of that community. And um. And so I just, I, there has been, at least I have picked up on a feeling of a lot of us versus them at various points. And I I'm hoping that we can be doing various things to be mending that.
That's great. All right, we got consensus on one pretty huge issues. That's all. All right. Um, Council Payne, Council Pinkston, Pinkston, anything else from you two folks?
Um, yeah, I'll just say that relative to staff, I. I was very worried when I walked in, what I was, I was worried before I walked in and when I walked in.
We were worried before you walked in, right?
I was, my expectation was that I was gonna see a staff that was like completely decimated. And um, like unable to sort of make the basic things work. And because of the perception and the reality at the highest levels of the city. That there was all of this instability and I know enough about organizations to know that that does trickle down, has huge issues, particularly what Mr. Rogers said about. You know, the, how staff feel like they're being treated by by elected members. Um, what I've been very pleased to see is that there's a a deep bench. It's or maybe not deep, but there has been a sufficient bench uh to to keep, to keep things going. And I've been impressed with people that I've met, um, impressed with their competency, I've been impressed with their um. Their care for the city and their pride in their work. And um, that's been a real relief for me. And it's why that I I was very supportive of including extra pay this time. Um, for a number of reasons, but one of which is that I felt like our staff deserve it. Um, and I've also been, you know, delighted with with our DCNs back there and the work that they've done and our, and our city manager as well and so. I I feel like we're on the cusp, we've even begun lots of really good work to to stabilize the staff. But I think um, any more work we can do, we should.
Uh, Mayor Snook, Rossner Wade.
I was having a conversation earlier today with uh city manager staff in particular. Marshall pointing out that we have nothing in this year's budget to deal with uh the unhoused population. We all, and more I thought about, I thought, okay, we also don't really have anything. That we, we have talked about, we haven't done anything about. Whether we can figure out a way to get them out of the business of mental health crisis response. Um, those, the the unhoused population issue is something that is likely to come to a head in a number of different ways. Uh, one way is simply that we've got um. You know, a- a- as the, as the tourist trade revives and the downtown mall gets gets repopulated. That's gonna become a sore, a sore point for some. The other question about how the police deal with mental health crises, that's one of the issues that I think there is widespread agreement. Uh, virtually everybody who who contacts us concerned about the police department budget. As in some way or another, the message that they want us to get the police department out of mental health response. Of course, a lot of problems is Virginia code requires it. Uh, but there may be other ways to deal with it. My, my point in raising this is twofold. First, that we've. So calling everybody's attention to the fact, we recognize these are issues where we don't have anything in this budget to address. But second is my, the question I was thinking about. How do we as counselors get proposals to fund? Typically, in a lot of cases, we get them because some nonprofit stands up and says, part of the library community fund, I wanna do something like that. Um. The fact that we haven't been able to make progress and uh any progress at all on the police department issue. Probably has as much to do with a changeover at the top of the police department as anything else, but that's not the only thing. Uh, I I think we, we ought to think about and the city manager's office ought to think about and. Uh, among others, how we can institutionalize getting better. More thorough development of ideas, of new ideas that would, that can then be, be thought out. Before suddenly when we get a funding request or anybody. And I don't know how, how that needs to, I mean, I I I can envision how it could work. But I don't know, I don't have the city manager experience, the city manager staff presumably can can think about that some. But we need to be a better incubator of ideas.
Uh, and I I agree, but I think that. City Hall staff has been on their heels for the last several years. That's the impression that I, that I got and I think.
And that's absolutely true. Absolutely true. Cause it's not always just counsel hearing from a community and saying, okay, staff, go figure it out. Sometimes it's coming from staff, you guys, or it's coming from nonprofits, whoever. Yeah, it can start anywhere.
Most of our tenure has been about COVID. I mean.
No, absolutely. That's everybody. Yeah, absolutely.
Thing I worry about is. I have a number of what I'll call um consistent and helpful channels of feedback to me. Um, that that help make, and these are people that are thoughtful, well-informed, really paying attention. Um, but sometimes they're all kind of coming from the same space and they kind of say the same thing over and over again, you know, well, I I got that, I hear what you're saying, I'm gonna work on that. I worry about, you know, the vast numbers of people in Charlottesville who don't even think about city government perhaps. Or don't think about, you know, speaking to one of us and, you know, their voices are important too. Many of them don't have the bandwidth to to come on, uh, you know, at a city meeting on a, on a weeknight. So I, that is something that I don't know how to fix that, but it's something I want to be thoughtful, you know. Who who all are we hearing from and are we hearing from enough people and are we um, you know, putting all these ideas together? So.
Sort of goes back to that capacity we talked about earlier of.
Yeah.
Actually be able to have enough civic engagement, you guys have enough input to make a good decision. Yeah.
Yeah.
And it's kind of a catch twenty-two with us meeting virtually, cause I think that that has allowed more and more people to provide comment.
Yeah.
Maybe if we were even meeting in person, they couldn't stay until, you know, ten, ten, eleven o'clock or so, but they could. You know. Yeah. But but they could stay, um, they could call in because they were up, but not necessarily be out, but.
Just wanted to offer one thing. We used to do it, I I can't remember if it was every three years or every four years. Um, but we used to work with the National League of Cities and we would send out a survey. Um, across the city and it used to go out in utility bills actually. Um, where we, it was not to every household, but it was a, you know, we would pick. Uh, we'd send out five thousand or whatever it was. Um, and it was a way to get, you know, you can frame those questions, like how safe do you feel in your neighborhood? Or, you know, what do you think about XYZ issue? And they were, you know, meant to be where they could just check quick answers, um, sort of like a census type of thing. And that's, we haven't done that for a long time. Um, and that may be one way to, I think it was, at the time, it was like, I don't know, ten thousand dollars or so. But they actually do all the mailing and um, they compile all the results for us and. Um, there, there's a lot of support with that.
Yeah.
That's, 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 that's very interesting. I've, I've been thinking about. Uh, a community survey as, as part of our work and uh. Um, and wondering about, oh man, is it, you know, is it too soon or should we just move forward and uh, and do it? You know, in terms of, you know, where the community is now. But I think the utility bill idea is, is is a good one, so let's.
I will.
We visit that one.
One problem with the utility bill though is more and more people are going to the electronic utility bills.
Majority have shifted, yeah.
And.
We still have the capacity to to use that, we just don't deploy it for sending out bills.
But I think they can mail them separate. I mean, I think we can figure out the method, but.
The point is you don't open the bill. If you then get it in, or if you're on a payment plan where you pay the same amount every month, you don't open it. Um, and that's, that's something we ran into, I know during COVID with some stuff. I was talking to some people and they're like, I never open my bill. I pay the same a month every month.
It comes automatically out of my account.
Yeah. And that's where automation, so we'd also need on top of that, please open your utility bills this month, maybe the local radio stations, PSAs.
Right, I I agree. I I think uh, and I'm not wedded to utility, that that's just the methodology. But but I think that we should, it should be as wide as possible. And then whoever responds, as long as we get the standard five percent response, which is a good survey. Then that that gives us some uh, some viable, viable information.
And and most, most consultants, other groups, Coop Center or National Assistant Survey or any of those groups that, they they've figured out ways to navigate. Modern day, you know, how to get to people uh with these things and still get a statistically valid sample, so.
We also used to send out a budget survey. Um, and I, actually, I may have misspoken, the National League of Survey, um, that may have gone out separately. The budget survey definitely went out in utility bills as an insert.
Was that a a a request for um input on budget priorities?
Yeah.
Yeah, we used to ask, um, I can, I can show you an old one, but it was um sort of very high-level priorities. Um, or they could provide additional feedback. Um, one time I got a blank check.
Yeah, thinking of employing a survey as well for um. Input of the police chief search, that's what began to think about that, ask community, you know, what are the characteristics? They would uh look for and new police chief and what kind of questions they, we should ask, you know, any candidate, et cetera. Don't know how successful it'd be, but it, you know, but I, but I think the, a survey in addition to maybe uh. Uh, some focus groups with uh, with key leaders in the community. Might be a way to to gather that kind of information and turn it over to the, to the search firm that uh. Uh, that went to search and, you know, maybe even the search firm can can conduct it. I don't know if, you know, how successful it'd be if we have somebody from outside. Community doing the search. That's why I was thinking that we do it ourselves and turn it over, so we can figure that out.
And that ties back into the benchmarking stuff too, right? Because you'd like to be able to take that data, that rich data you get from your citizens and your businesses and actually be able to analyze that with.
Yeah.
Whoever your peers, whoever you wanna compare to.
Right.
I think that is a definite, and that might be something we need to investigate as far as staffing goes. It's, it's great to be getting these surveys, but then what are we gonna do with the information? Um, how are we gonna utilize that information? Um, who's gonna put it together? Who's gonna express what departments should be listening to what? Um, who's gonna disseminate it to the different places, to council, to, um. Cause we've done, I know we've done some surveys in the past, in the last two years on some things and. I remember looking at one of them going, okay, now what am I supposed to do with this? I've got all this data and all this information, but what do I wanna do with it?
There's nothing worse than people feel, well, I I told you what I wanted, you've not done anything with it.
That's right.
You know, and there's been surveys in the past, I know, where people said, why am I bothering spending my time on this? What are you gonna do with it? And so I think. That should be part of the survey is saying, this is what we are planning on doing with the information you give us.
And I think there's some good examples of communities that are doing that, but you guys can can look at for best practices for sure.
Sure, sure. I mean, I I I think that you 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 form some work groups internally around uh some of the key issues that are identified. And have people work on it and then you're able to uh report through uh employee newsletters that you said this. This is what we're doing, this is the result, et cetera, would get that dialogue back and forth.
All right, these are, these are solid actionable items here. We're not talking pie in the sky stuff, guys, so let's keep going. This is good, right?
So, another, another um item that, that I talk a lot about in, in Brian and I. We still kind of on the, on campaign trail a little bit, you know, things that we talked about that we can do, but I think this is really feasible. Things that we talked about that we can do, but I think this is really feasible as far as feedback from the public, you know, no matter how. Easy we make it, whether we have people to call in or come, we still will get a large portion of people to not to participate. But I can tell you, if I go walk in and tent the page or wherever, people will share their input. And so I think that our planners, you know, cause I I'm a trained planner, cause I know that they are really out there. Um, you know, if they, if there's more interaction, meet people where they are. That we would get more authentic input from the public than just some of the same um, people that we get it from, which is. Which is great. I've I've learned a lot. I don't think, I think they need to continue on. But I think it's such so much untapped energy and information that we're not getting. Because people just don't participate in the former government that uh, input that that um. We have now, what even with the call in or certainly not coming down um, to to city council chambers, so. And but it would just take simply, you know, walk in the neighborhood and and get in, get in, talking, you know. People, um, and they would, they'll have to get some, get to know you, you know, the the people, but um, you know, that that won't, that won't take long.
And some communities that have an at large, just like you guys do, they will occasionally plan out, um. You know, obviously, I understand with technology and transparency and requirements and everything else, you've got to have your meetings and recording everything else. But it, there there's a lot of communities have done work sessions of council in a specific neighborhood, in a community center or in some of the places that's outside the city hall.
Yeah.
That way that neighborhood feels like, if they came to us, like, you know, they heard us.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like that idea a lot. Have have we done that in years past? Anyone know?
Yes. That we used to call them town hall meetings.
Yeah, at the community centers, so, yeah. From the the recent conversations I had about how how they were orchestrated, yes. I I'd be very interested in that, maybe once a quarter or.
And and that's something that we can do as council, but I think that, I know when I, I if I want to know what really is going on. I go walk in and and talk to to residents. I couple that with what the emails and staff report. And then I kind of feel like I'm getting the full picture of what's what's going on.
I was thinking suspicion as we emerged from COVID, everyone's out in public more, when you're at the grocery store and restaurants, people will be glad to walk up to you and tell you what they think.
Yes.
Yeah.
The town hall meetings are uh, it's a, it's a good model. Uh, I mean, taking government to, you know, to the communities and the community centers of the churches and. And um, having them have an opportunity to talk directly to their leaders and to. To hear reports from some of the city uh, uh, city department heads on on their functions and services. And we, I I think that's all, you know, part of rebuilding that trust between community and 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 city halls. So we should uh, look at how soon we can get back to that.
But I'd love seeing something in Tonsler Park, I mean, Tonsler Park or Washington Park.
Tonsler was the example that I was given as I was talking about, what are we thinking about doing to expand the facility?
Well, I was meaning to say Washington and I was looking at you when I said Tonsler, so I must have been like reading your mind.
And that's that's part of what this is for you guys and for staff too. You're you're also rebuilding institutional knowledge of this organization, right? I mean, there's, there's been a, there's been a lot of loss of that, and so just having these conversations to reboot some of it, restart, yeah, it's important, yeah.
And you know what I think? As much as there's downsides to losing institutional knowledge, there's also positives when you have a bunch of new people coming in. And simply asking, can you explain to me why we're doing this?
Absolutely.
Because then you have to explain why you're doing it beyond, well, this is why we've always done it.
Yeah.
And it's not saying that why we've always done it that way isn't right, isn't, is per, it could maybe perfectly the right way of doing it. But it also sometimes causes the person to sit back and say, well, you know what, I don't even know why we're doing it this way. It's just how this has developed over time. I don't know if it's the right way, it's just how it is.
Sometimes the facts on the ground change, like Miss Campbell said about the B doc, you know.
Yeah.
That makes sense now.
And it's, again, I'm not trying to say that we were doing things wrong before, that our our people were doing things wrong. It's just sometimes we relook at things as times change and everything, we're like, huh, maybe that isn't quite the best way we can be doing this.
The mayor mentioned about um. Having a process for um, thinking through ideas, we had an incubator of ideas. That's what this is, you know, this this having, having opportunities like this for for uh, interact and. And uh. Make up things, you know, that's where we can, we can start building some great ideas together in terms of improving the city. So we need, need to build in more time.
I think that, I think that another lens that I think maybe we're beginning to sort of see here is, and I think several of you mentioned this either in in response to me or or this evening. Um, you know, rebuilding trust and respect with various points of community, yeah, my best, some of them we're looking at strategically. Uh, when we look at these issues, uh, it's not just willy nilly. Yes, of course, that's what we're gonna do, but it's, it's an overarching theme and everything that you're doing for transparency sake. For, you know, honesty's sake, all those good things.
I mean. Again, there's over, you know, and this, this isn't gonna happen overnight. Most of the, none of this is gonna happen overnight. Um, and I don't, I don't expect it to happen overnight. I mean, I am, the more things that we can put online. I'm for that. I just, you know, this is an age of open platforms, open source. And anytime that I can help a constituent say, yeah, go, go look at it here, um. I grew up in a time of a lot of, you know, like, nope, that's the black box over there, we're not going. And I'm all about opening those boxes up and letting everyone see it, um. But I also know that takes, that takes staff power, that takes computer power, that takes. And you've also got to do it in a way that it isn't just overwhelming with information. So that the amount of information becomes non-transparent because you're sifting through so much.
Actionable items. On the ground. Council, staff, community, maybe those things.
Operational definitions for equity, climate change and affordable housing?
As as a, as a overarching lens for decision making of council and staff? Or just to clarify what we're talking about? So everyone's on the same page? What are you, what are you looking for?
Well, both. I mean, an operational definition so that equity, climate change and affordable housing mean the same thing to everybody within the city. Whether, when we are talking about affordable housing on the dais, when the city attorney is sending us. Something that's coming up with affordable housing, when NDS is telling a developer, this is what you've got to do with an affordable housing, when the cap. We all know what we mean by that.
So I don't think we're gonna get everyone in the city to agree. I think that. That we, we, you know, as elected officials, we have to agree on that, but I don't think that it's just.
All these things, I mean, I don't think there's gonna be one simple definition, but obviously. Um, but I think it's the metrics to measure success or failure in agreement on that and then how to how to afford from there. Um, I don't know. Maybe, cause to your point, I mean, depending on someone's position, like affordable housing for them could mean ten different things that are all legitimate.
Well, and maybe the answer is to avoid the term affordable housing when we have something more specific in mind. Yeah, to say, okay, let's talk about zero thirty percent AMI, let's talk about thirty to fifty. And frankly, there are plenty of people in Charlottesville who are talking about the difficulty of finding affordable housing. Who are at a hundred and twenty percent of AMI.
Right.
The problem, it it's, it's a different problem, but it's, we use the same words.
Yeah.
And that, at some point, that gets in the way.
There's a really good article that showcases this discussion in several parts of the state of Virginia Business this week. That talks about what is affordable housing by community and your AMI and all those things. I'll, anyway, take a look at that if you.
Yeah.
Some of your friends in Northern Virginia and the newer valley are featured there prominently, so.
I just want us to be on the same page when we're talking about something and that we are actually talking about apples. If we want to push, make an apple pie and we're not talking about peaches instead.
Is it, just to help.
Those metaphors.
Just to help me to sort of understand, I think, where council as a whole is on this issue, because we, we talked about this at the beginning of the evening, you know, defining, not defining. Um, really ultimately the goal of council, if I'm hearing you guys, is to make sure that these things are thought about when you're making critical decisions. And understand what that means to you, and it could be different for everybody too, vice mayor's point, everyone's gonna have a, you know, and to your point of the person said, why are we even defining equity? Why are we even, you know, so. It, what, what is council's goal here? Is it, is it, is there, is it a, is a document for you guys to have that guides your decision making as a group? And help staff understand what they need to be looking for when they're thinking about it? What, what exactly, let's try to narrow this down beyond just that thirty thousand foot. I think that might be a little, but I'm not trying to define any of these terms tonight or anything else. I just wanted to have a little bit of better stance, so staff can go back and go, okay, we can, we can try to sort of do some research on this and help them.
For me about actionable items, I mean, I think. One of the things we have to do is, you know, we've adopted or pledged our intention for a lot of really big picture stuff. And how do we just start to implement those commitments we've already made without adding a bunch of new stuff? Before we've even put the pieces in place to do what we've already committed to. Um, and so on actionable items, like one of them with affordable housings, we adopted an affordable housing strategy. Sort of what's a more specific game plan of. The recommendations in it, the timeline of when we're gonna go through them, and how do we start to think about how they. Those different policy tools connect with each other, um, our climate action plan, how do we, what will. Investments do we need to make to actually get that completed and then begin to implement it from there? Um, so I think there's some really big stuff that already exists, we just have to. Get realistic about the, what it, what it's gonna take to start doing it, because I think we have no shortage of. Studies and plans over the years that have ended up sitting on shelves. And then when you go back and create a new plan for something that we created a plan for ten years ago that we've never.
I think when, when a plan has, has been successfully implemented. It has usually been because there is some one person who, who has that as his or her project. Uh, has ownership of that plan, have, where they know that the, their job is to make sure that every month. Something is happening and every month something is getting reported to council. And that there are, there are decisions that we've got to make, that we're being told that you've got to make this decision now. And we just are not able to ignore it. Um, and I I think it's, it it it. If we had a housing coordinator or whatever the title is right now, it would be easier to say. That's your job. Make sure that the affordable housing plan stays in our consciousness every month. We don't have that person.
It's the same climate, right? We do have a climate person, but I guess they've not been sort of empowered or whatever.
Right, well, we don't have a plan for them to work on.
But they're working on to bring to us.
Right.
But similarly, that same thing would apply if if that was their job to get up in our faces every, right? You know, few weeks and say, look, this is where we are, this is what we need, and that, that's what we would want them to do, is to to hold our feet to fire.
I think that's the clarity that we've been looking for. If if that's the approach that you're, you feel like is the more productive way of doing it. I'm with you.
Man, just knowing the way I work, I need somebody to be nagging.
Sure. Someone with the subject matter expertise.
Right. Yes.
And.
We have plenty of nags, so we, we didn't, we know.
I do. Someone who's pushing. Pushing thoughtfully, and I think around housing and around um, climate. And then, you know, to go back to the, to the equity word, someone who can help put even more sort of. Definition about, you know, I don't know, what is a, a good virtuous city look like if it comes to like. Um, taking care of everyone, and I I know that there are plenty of policy folks who. Could speak to all of that, but that's not, that's not me, but um, having a plan, I'm sure there are plans in place that Marshall has. But. You know, I would be interested in, in having someone who's saying, this is sort of what we're working on, these initiatives around equity. Again, a very broad word, maybe it's too, too broad to be useful, but um. That would help me as well to have someone who's a subject matter expert on the topic, saying, this is what I think we should do.
I will submit that thankfully they came back in the room, because I put all we want in here when we were discussing whether or not we should define the terms. We need to define the terms. It is important that we define what equity is from your perspective as the leaders of the city. It is important for us to define what affordable housing is to the city of Charlottesville. Because there are many, many different ideas that are floating around. I get that and I've always appreciated that. There is one definition of affordable housing by the US Department of Housing and Urban Development, because that is their charge in this country. We have butchered that over the years just through practice. What we can also do is add a layer to, what does affordable housing mean here in the city of Charlottesville? And that can be different from the overarching definition, because it's about the local market that we're striving to try to reach, what our products, set our priorities. And what metrics are we setting? Monday, I'm just telling you, I'm already giving you forecasts of what's happening Monday night. We're gonna be talking about exactly this. I've already laid out how we're gonna talk about it. And I, my goal is to get you to commit to the idea that we need to define affordable housing for the city of Charlottesville. So that is my priority. I know she wants you to define equity, because we talked about it.
Let's see, Sam, for me, I'm not a subject matter expert on a topic, so if you, if you come to me and say. This is what HUD has to say, these are options for what Charlottesville could say, then I could do something with that.
You'll see it on Monday.
All right.
On Sunday, we got a lot to do on Monday night.
And I would. Change equity too.
Yep.
And I think that from, sorry, from coming back in, please, um, from, from coming back in on the tail end. Equity can be a lot of things. I have a definition of equity. The question I pose to you all, however, is what is the important driver? For diversity, equity and inclusion that matters to you all? Because my definition is fairly broad. It coincides with uh, Dr. Janice Underwood's one Virginia plan that she had created. However, again, in our community. Equity may be perceived as something perhaps that is more specific, more narrow, more broad. I have a, there are, there is a definition, I have one, but to create a work plan. And it doesn't, and subject matter expert need not apply. What would you all like for, to focus on as part of your equity work? And then my job is to create the tactics and strategies under it and present it. But my definition of equity may not match up with you all as representatives of the constituents in this community, if that makes sense.
Yeah, but all I'm saying is that you know a lot more about the topic and even where people disagree on it. And if you come to me, we don't have to do it in a council meeting, maybe this is something we can talk about separately. But if you, if you were to say, you, this, if. If you were to distill down for a project manager like me. What, what are the different approaches cities are taking around equity in all these various facets? And give me options and help me think through, help me process my own values and what that looks like. That's, that's what I'm, now, Mr. Payne, I think he knows more about this topic than I do. Um, so I'm catching up in terms of my education. I hope that makes sense. In other words. I hear what you're saying, that you need us to sort of give you direction, but what I need is at least sort of a menu or a curation.
You, you, you need something foundational for work.
Yeah, I need something kind of curated for, for, um, and I'm not trying to put all the work on you, I'm just being honest about.
I, I, I understand, and 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 I, I do see that, that.
I I I understand. And 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 I I do see that that that's that that's some that's some additional. Front end work that we have to do that that uh, come to you with. Um, maybe a concept paper or proposed resolution that defines. Um, equity, maybe based on your your definition and and uh. And that council noodle with it. To get to a position that they go all can support, but. But um, but have something before you that you can work with and and discuss.
Does that make sense, Ashley?
Yes, sir. It it does make sense and and I apologize for the gunshots, but we are in a community that does not lack thoughts and opinions on what this role should or should not be. And so I can tell you that that what I would present to you would be perhaps different than the pulse of the community whom you all represent. So that's if you hear me saying, please feel free to give though your thoughts. That is why, because this community has. Some very specific goals and objectives that it would like to reach, but sometimes they contradict each other. Which is where I need the the help in saying. Ashley, for the next three years, we at least wanna focus on this big space, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
And you you do the the rest of the work, but here's the big space we want you to play.
Understood. It's sort of a cart horse moment here, seems to me. You know, we've got a, you've got to answer these questions. You it'd be nice if you don't have to reinvent the wheel. It sounds like that's what I'm hearing. Uh, you'd like to have some foundational information, best practices from other communities, plenty of great examples for you to look at and see for some that's like what you can customize. For your community. And then staff can take that and that might help. Definitely manager then maybe create something that does sort of reflect that pulse that she's looking for, but she may not bring it to table initially.
Yeah, and it's the starting point and we are hearing from plenty of people and they may disagree, but you know, I'm I'm relying on all's expertise. And a number of these things and I'll parse it with what I hear from members of the community, but I have a lot of. Respect from what you all know, so. That's part of what I'm relying on.
And I would like to add to that, that. Whatever the definition, the book definition, so to speak, of affordable housing or the book definition of equity may be. There are no doubt. Similar thoughts, parallel thoughts perhaps, or uh, slightly different demographic groups, but the same thought applies or something. And if we spend our time arguing about whether those people are or are not included in a book definition. We're kind of wasting our time because on the one hand, I mean, let let what's important is that we understand each other. What what's important is that when when we make a commitment to a principle that uses a certain word, we all understand what that word is intended to mean. It doesn't mean that anything that isn't within that definition is something we don't wanna do. It just means we've got to find a different vocabulary. To describe that in addition to the book definition and I. I I I just hope that we we recognize when we get done with all of this, that yes, there's a book definition of affordable housing. But there are probably other things that are related concepts. That that we also wanna be paying attention to.
I was thinking for an operational definition for our operation. For affordable housing, equity and climate impact. On change or carbon. But that's the other things, like when we talk about climate change, are we talking about? Carbon reduction? Are we talking about mitigation? Are we talking about?
Sure.
Resiliency. So.
And those are things that you as a counselor are going to have to figure out in some way, shape or form with staff self. I mean.
Yeah.
Staff staff's gonna be there to help you, but those are decisions you guys are gonna remain.
Yeah.
Yeah, and don't get me wrong.
Just a little bit, but you that's.
I'm not asking anyone to make the decisions for us.
Sure, sure.
Cause that that's that's our job and we we need to be fully accountable for that. Please don't hear that at all. I'm just simply saying. Helping set the table, which I'll do a great job of, by the way, but helping set the table for us to make the best decisions we can.
Right. Got it.
And I ask you a quick question for housekeeping. Uh, we're right after seven. We plan to go to eight this evening. Uh, do you guys want to take a quick bio break or anything else? Or you plow through and get going, going, what do you wanna do? Your pleasure, council.
Fine.
Okay.
Keep going.
All right. This conversation is good. Let's keep, let's keep rolling. All right. I wanna put a pin in and maybe that and come back to it maybe a little bit tomorrow as we sort of prioritize. I think that's something that we're going to have a little bit more conversation of. We can do it now, we do it tomorrow, but I. I feel like when you talk about that a little bit more, so staff can walk out of here tomorrow afternoon or tomorrow, whenever we finish. Uh, and have some some fairly good guidance on the next steps to present to you guys and bring back some information for you.
Yeah, but I think. And I definitions, but you know, in that conversation, I think again about like. What sort of direct, specific, like measurable material impact can we look at on people? Is it the wealth gap? Is it um? You know, emissions, what the we have an emissions reduction target goal, you could measure that and see how close or far you are in getting to it. The number of affordable housing units built and what AMI levels that they're at. Um. Those, I don't know. I mean, those to me seem like a strong starting place of figuring out. Where we're. Where we're at, where we need to go and if we're going forwards or backwards. Um, and then the other thought I had is another action item is something that we haven't discussed as much as a council. Is really thinking about what is our big picture economic development strategy for Charlottesville? Cause in my mind, you know, we're a community defined by UVA as an anchor institution, which is going to bring in, you know. Large amount of wealth that's in years. And the question is how that. Wealth is distributed and who has any opportunity to benefit from that wealth? Um, so even when we're talking about like affordable housing and. In equity and public transportation, in my mind, part of it is sort of like. Those things seem seem to connect to a broader strategy of sort of. Community wealth building as part of an economic development strategy and what we want the goal to be as Charlottesville continues to grow.
Senator Payne, I think what you just said is is really in line. I think it's helped me sort of reframe this conversation for you guys and for staff. I think we're getting stuck to to your old point on the what are what are the words we need to say here, but it really is. These are our aspirational goals. We want to make a measurable impact in these areas. Here's the way that we can actually have impact. Cause there are only so many things the city itself can do on some of these things, right? You've only got control over so many aspects of. Affordable housing, whatever that is, equity, whatever that is, uh, climate change, whatever that is. I mean, there's 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 places where you can actually make change and maybe that's the focus is. Yes, we aspire to follow these. These concepts, these ideas, we believe in them, and here's where we believe we can actually make impact in our community. Okay. That's very helpful. Economic development conversation, you wanna talk about that a little bit, council? Cause that was in, uh, that was a follow up uh, for several of you all and what does that mean for us? How do we become even more sustainable? Cause uh. Last time I checked, uh, there's a lot of things we talked about cost money, right? So uh, and there's only so much money to go around. Uh, and uh, anyway, love for Mrs. Ham will be able to give her some good feedback as she continues to work for you guys. What what do you wanna talk about economic development and just the the growth of the economy, the stability, and that could be everything, workforce. You know, attraction, business retention, uh, huge issues as we come out of this this pandemic.
And I I'll just continue to start with that. Is what I was saying in terms, at least how I think about it is. I think no matter what we do or don't do, there is going to be strong economic growth in Charlottesville because of UVA as an anchor institution. And the industries and type of employment that that's brought into our community. Um, and so in unlike, you know, a community like in Southwest Virginia or Danville. I don't think we need to worry about as much about incentivizing an industry or business to come in. That's gonna happen no matter what. I think our bigger problem is that that economic growth continues, but only a small handful of people. Have access to benefiting from that wealth creation that those industries are bringing in. Um, the Orange dot report that PBCC does shows that we rank. I forget what you were, ninety seventh percentile for economic mobility. In other words.
Yeah.
Um, only three percent of communities have less economic mobility than we do, which is typical for college towns for that to be pretty bad. Point being, I I think of it as like.
Mobility or immobility.
What do you like, oh. We're like in.
We're in the bad.
Three percent of communities are worse at economic mobility than we are, so very little economic mobility. Um, but point being like, I I think it's critical for us to think about strategies for community wealth building. And looking at who has access to homeownership, to business creation. Um, to be employed by the industries that are coming here, because right now I think there's an enormous divide and there's. Not much of a middle class and it is increasingly disappearing within Charlottesville.
Yeah.
That's a.
I mean, this goes back to Juan's mentoring and how do we mentor our youth and. Um, our youth programs too about. Bringing our youth up to stay here. In a good paying job, not in a job that's not gonna be. Working um, for our mark or working for. And or if it is our mark, at least that they're paying a living wage. Um, but that are the jobs that we have in our city seem to be very, it's either. Minimum wage or it's. Much bigger. We don't, we're, I mean, again, Michael's just said this with, you know, we're disappearing middle class in a lot of ways. Um. But how do we?
Have you grown a middle between service industry and hospitality and those jobs that are between that and hundred thousand?
Yeah, and that and that people who are growing up here feel like they have, you know, they have hope and have. And have an actual ability to get an education and stay here.
Well, so the network to work thing that um, the program that Ridge Skyler has and Frank Scolacci at PBCC. That model seems really cool and seems to be working. Um. Is there a way we could like work more with them to help sort of?
Well, I think the city, city's doing a lot to work with them. It's just not, it's not for for everyone. We just need to have his, you know, other. Programs and there was the goal program with An- Antoine and and so we just gotta have a lot of different options. And so. I work with, this is my job, you know, to help these individuals, you know, for job readiness, get to get jobs and and. The it the pay has really increased over the last two years. I'm talking about from nine to ten dollars now to seventeen, eighteen dollars an hour, but. Even and that's with, you know, a high school diploma or or less and many jobs at UVA with with um. Four benefits, but still you, in this community, you still won't be able to 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 buy. A home, you still won't be like rolling in cash to be able to take a vacation maybe with your family, you know, uh, you know, a. To go away for a weekend type of things that many of us kind of take for granted. It's it's really hard and you don't have to go to four year school to do that, but we just need to provide. Work closely with the new industries. Charlottesville is becoming a hub now for small business, fif- five to fifteen people that's. People that's leaving UVA, starting small businesses. We, how can we? You know, tap into that to for some of our um, high school graduates or, you know, people who who may be. You know, eighteen to thirty years old or so. Um, so. I have a couple of comments on economic development. What what I would like to know as a decision maker is. You know, if we get requests for a funding. For some type of business or something, I I, you know. What is the impact if we, let's say, give a, I'm just gonna use a hundred thousand dollars for a business? Would that then give us five hundred thousand dollars back over X amount of years and taxes and things? So that would help me. To 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 support it for one, so I can say, well, I know that we have other, you know, priorities. But if we give money to this, even though it's not housing or or something, we'll have more money back to give. Through the vibrant fund or something like that. So that I think that that would be very beneficial.
Return on investment for economic development, but also showing some protection and callbacks, making sure that. It's done appropriately as you see that.
Yes, yes. And I think that we we, you know, even though we are, a lot of people come here for the weekends and things and for. From DC and Richmond and things. I think we can do more particularly around the holiday season for the downtown. I think about Brian just left Williamsburg and I used to go down every year for. School board conference and and they, for every weekend, they for. From November to who it seemed like the end of the year, they have some type of. Event or festival of lights or something that's going on in that that downtown area. And I still feel like we really. Have that here in Charlottesville. And I I think that if we as a city can work with. The the, you know, I heard that for the lights, for for. Um, the holiday season was a big issue. Parks and Recs didn't wouldn't let the Downtown Association own, you know, own them because it was a. I mean, it was just like typical government type of stuff. If, you know, if we kind of work together, I think we can get a lot more people to come here because. Hey, something is going in Charlottesville that we can, we can go and stay and eat and. Uh, instead of us looking, say how we can not do something because that's not the way we do it, cyclists. See how we can work with the merchants, work with the residents to increase, you know. You know, we need to do a lot now to increase Charlottesville's name in a positive manner and to get people here to um. To spend, so I I. And and I know that maybe the last few years staff may have been reluctant to to um. Come up, be innovative because again, we've been on our heels and so, but now I I. We need to say, what can we do to uh, make Charlottesville more open?
Having some strategic conversations around the business community, around folks that are making those investments and bringing people to the community.
Yeah.
Hiring people, absolute.
Yeah, and there is a new rebranded downtown Seaville, Friends of Seaville or something downtown. Um, and they're fantastic people and they wanna work with the city and I'm sure there are. Parts of that integration that will need some work. Um, but I I definitely, I know a number of those people and they. You know, they care about the city. They wanna see good things happen and they wanna be um. Thoughtful and how they how how they do that in in terms of working with us, so.
When was the last time there was a uh, presentation on economic development before council?
I don't know.
No, none are done.
You know.
Men money either. And understanding the tools that we have to work with and 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 um. The some of the successes we've had and it may raise some questions too, you know, why haven't we done more? But at least it begins. Uh, a good conversation about what the city is doing in terms of its economic development and how we're interacting with businesses and what more can we do?
Yeah, and I would love to see the downtown piece be part of that. There has historically, the last few years anyway, there my perception is there's been a. Conflict in either personalities or approach or whatever between some folks in the downtown community, business community. And some folks in the activist community that I've always thought made no sense at all. Um, because good can come can flow from a from a. Hell of a relationship there, but. I'll say the two times that I I've run for office here, the. The downtown business community definitely is very opinionated about um, how they feel like the city works with them. And I know they, you know, everyone has their own sort of perspective, but I I I agree with Juan. I think that's something that is helpful as possible. If there's feedback the downtown business community needs from the city, you know, fine. Um. But I I've always wondered why there's this kind of antagonism that I that I witness.
And you get in council, you get a chance to ask, well, why are we doing it this way? Economies, some aspect of economic development.
Yeah, I think it's a a more immediate practical matter. You know, I know some of the. Staff members within our economic development department who had really been. The main people involved with our workforce development program, our minority business programs is no longer with us. And the future of a lot of those programs, I think. Is gonna determine on the actions we are taking now.
Right.
And I think we can't lose the momentum that we had there and we need to make sure it doesn't go away and then build on it. Um, and. And two other points that came to mind is one, I think. Um, we have to build some kind of relationship with UVA more than there is now. Um, just because they have a two billion dollar annual offering budget compared to our two hundred million. Um. Um, and, 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 and so we can have some difficult conversations with them. About our structural relationship in terms of things like payment and taxes, but also some other. Communication around maybe less contentious or much smaller things. Um, cause obviously they're sort of the elephant in the room for our local economy. Um, and the final part is, I, I would just say, you know, as we have conversations about economic development. In the downtown mall and in business development, is I just think it will be vital to. Always having in that conversation, who has access to benefit from this business development activities? And um, what sectors in the community are these new businesses. Attracting as their clientele, because I think there's certainly a, um, it's a. Rich, highly educated, younger clientele that most new things cater to, and I know that's creates a lot of sense of. There's not enough in the community for me from a lot of people.
Clientele and employee.
Yeah.
One of the things that uh I think we also need to. To focus on, and this is something that I think we're gonna need to focus on sooner than we're thinking. That is that uh we don't have any agreement. Any common understanding about what we want to have happen with the. Uh, the few spaces in Charlottesville that are even potentially useful as a commercial. Or manufacturing or high tech or whatever kind of a district. For primary economic activity, if we don't have a very solid primary economic activity. The only way the city has of raising money is raising taxes on personal, personal homes. If that's all, if we were gonna take all this prime real estate and do nothing but put housing on it. We haven't gained anything financially, we have, uh, we have gained a lot of costs. A lot more students in our schools, but we haven't gained the tax base.
You can add.
Right, and.
And it's also not good climate, because then you're take, even though it might be dense, people are driving everywhere to get.
And so, what, I mean, I, I said this frequently during the, during campaign a couple of years ago, that. Uh, we know that the University of Virginia has a detailed plan. About what they wanna have happen in and around Charlottesville, we don't know what it is, but we know they got one. We know that the high tech industry has at least a vision. That they have expressed in their own circles from time to time of what they think would be good in Charlottesville. We don't even have a vision. And the places that the high tech people are thinking about, for example, are, you know, Preston Avenue and Harris Street. And, and so on, uh, and we've got, that, that's one of the few places in town. Where some of those kinds of commercial activities could be permitted under our friend zoning. If we rezone in our new zoning ordinance in such a way as to zone that out. And put it into housing instead, which is what some people have advocated for us. Then we're gonna be missing a real opportunity. Uh, we already have a small area plan, Cherry Avenue, that basically says they want relatively lower density. Uh, residential properties and they don't want commercial stuff, and if we end up. Exceeding to exactly what they have prescribed, we will be losing, I think, some, some valuable economic opportunities as well. There are a few other parcels around town, you know, like the, the X parcel, for example, and the, the strategic investment area and. You know, there, there are other places like that we've talked about where we are likely to have to make decisions in the next twelve months. That are, are going to be decisions that come down to exactly the question you're asking, Michael, which is. What is our plan for economic development? To what extent does a plan for economic development conflict? With the desire to build more affordable housing on some of those parcels? And that's, that's a decision that was gonna come to us.
Well, I would certainly agree, you know, especially looking at, you know, this critical parcel like ICS. Yeah, I don't, I don't know if anyone's been, it's a random example, if anyone's been like Asheville, North Carolina, and you see like the River Arts District. You see the difference of a city that planned for how it would develop versus if you just did nothing. And you just had what popped up, popped up and I certainly agree, we're in a situation where we haven't been able to do any practice. Thinking of something interesting or structured that we'd like to see.
I do wanna say that. We've talked about what. So when we brought up that there hadn't been a plan presented to council, I do wanna remind everybody, we were in COVID for two years. Um, economic development, I think was really focusing on helping businesses in recovery. I do know that our economic development office was working with the community and reaching out to community members for. Economic forums about what would, how would be helpful for their recovery, I think, so I just wanted to put that out there.
No, it's all about the transition from what you had to deal with to, you know, a disaster.
Yeah, I think they did a really fine job with that too, and I said in one of their meetings, I was very impressed with the work they were doing with the PPP loans and.
Yeah, I just didn't, I didn't want it to come across that we didn't feel like they were doing anything, and so.
Not, not at all, and, and when I met with, with Chris, I, I uh simply gave him my perspective and. And, and, and that is, uh, from economic development standpoint, it's a focus on jobs. You know, for people in the community and uh, uh, and, and new development to the extent that it, it, it can exist. Because it adds to the tax base for us to uh, uh, invest. In other areas of, of, of community, that's my relationship, and I think, think of. Jobs and job, cr- job, uh, job training, I mean, new employers coming here. Uh, having that kind of relationship that those new employers are gonna look to. Uh, people who come out of our job development programs, you know, who are trying to move to the, you know. Next level, uh, you know, in, in, in their career, all of that's all related and important and um. Uh, but economic development, I think, has to be focused on how do we move the needle? You know, given our circumstances, we don't have a lot of land. But, you know, what's the best, uh, highest and best use of the parcel, parcels that we have here? What can we do to uh have a, a great economic impact on, you know. You know, in this community, creating new jobs, uh, and opportunity, and, you know. I, I, I get the, 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 uh, the push-pull between affordable housing on some parcels. And, and uh, versus, you know, commercial, now, you know, there's opportunity for mixed-use development too.
Yes.
You know, that, uh, that, that might be compatible in, in some communities that, that you can, you can create some commercial. As well as housing, you know, in, on, on some par- parcels if we can, you know, uh, if we're open to it. And, uh, we can attract.
Yeah, so, Mr. Rogers, something that, that I would like to see from the imp. If we see positive impacts from economic development that I see every day in my job, when I'm helping someone. With their resume or to interview for a job, is that if they. Don't have like a, um. A college degree on, they're trying to get that entry level position, some of the obstacles that they need is, if, for, is. Perhaps funding for training, funding for transportation, funding for childcare. And these are things that we participate in, but we can do it at a higher level, and that if we have economic development, we can put. Some of that funds towards providing additional resources, because that's, those are some of the things, when I'm off talking with someone about their jobs. Some of the things that I ask them is like. You know, is, what's your, you know, what's your transportation, you know, and unfortunately, if it's, if they're riding a bus. It's a very small area, relatively speaking, that I can reach out to them if they saying so and so is carrying them, uh, you know. You can't depend on that because sometimes it'll fall through, and so, um, and if it's childcare, it's really. You know, sometimes it's not worth them getting a job if it's, if it's too, you know, anyway, so it's, um, it's not. If we wanted to be for those who are maybe of low wealth and sometimes more proportionally high of, of, of color. Then we have to some provide some resources in those other areas, so.
I'd also like to put on this econ- econ- economic development section, our owned buildings and what we are doing with them.
That's right.
And how are, how are the buildings that we own? Reflecting our economic development, reflecting our priorities and how we are utilizing them.
That's one of the first, uh, first questions I ask, I think first week. To uh try to understand what's, what property we own in the city and a lot of it. Um, I think I saw this, there's a hundred and fifty-one pieces of property or something like that, a lot of it is. You know, is, is uh leftover easements and stuff and you can't do very much with, with some of it's real. Real opportunity, we wanna see what that is and, and some of it is, uh, can be used for. Uh, uh, for sale, uh, or some of it can be used, uh, to, uh, uh. To, to lease or. Revenue generation, I mean, there are a lot of options here, so we're gonna coming, be coming to you with the, with the report. But three weeks, four weeks, then.
I'm not saying that. Say is, um, that, that work is definitely underway, the, the lease, um, status report will probably come faster. We, um, we've actually been able to find that we have had a significant amount of work being done just in different places, sadly. So now it's just trying to get it all compiled into one location so that we have it, we'll have that for you very shortly. And then the, the other work will come, um, after that.
I was kidding, Sam, that he's turning into an archaeologist.
Yes, I'm digging, I'm definitely digging.
That's fair.
Well, I mean, we, we take for granted some of these leases that. We. I mean, there is a wonderful program across the street here. That my child participated in for many years. We own that building. We don't collect rent. I don't know what the upstairs of that building does. So is this what we want to continue to support, but we should be making that decision actively every single year. And we should be asking, is this meeting the needs of our community? Is this where we still wanna be? Is this still pertinent? And is this being utilized in the most efficient way for our entire community? That's, doesn't mean that I wanna end that program over there, but it does mean that I want to understand. And every council after me should also understand and make a conscious choice.
And it may not have to be every year, cause that sounds like a lot.
The information is compiled in there, it's gonna be there to look at. Because those leases have to be re-upped every year, because we cannot bind another council to a financial decision.
Oh, we can make a multi-year lease.
We can.
Yes.
How is that not a financial decision?
Lisa, we can make a multi-year lease, can we not?
We can, yes, um, generally, um. If. A lot depends on whether we are leasing the property as a landlord or whether we are leasing the property as the tenant. Releasing the property as landlord, there's some state law regulations about the length of the lease. But you are certainly allowed to make a multi-year lease.
Thank you, cause that just doesn't, that just. I can be bound to like low leases but not bound to any. Well, it doesn't always make sense, Lloyd.
Five years is a part of what I'm.
So what the, what the rules say is that if you go over five years. Um, you're supposed to advertise a particular arrangement, um, as a bid process.
Interesting.
And so you're, you know, it's a, um, nobody ever bids when you do that, but, um.
Do you only do it that time when you initiate the original lease and never again after that?
Well, but depending on what you're looking at, so for example, years ago, you leased the, the Cars building. To Cars for a, a long-term lease.
Okay.
So that was done procedurally in accordance with the requirements, for a lot of leases, for example, the Discovery Museum. To simply make it simpler, you don't, your lease, your standard lease is for five years or less. So that doesn't trigger the special procedural requirements, but it means you're gonna see that lease coming back to you every five years. Um, and it gives you a chance to decide if you wanna continue or not.
So like, how long is the Cars lease?
Well, that's, um, an interesting question because, um, it's, it's. That may be expired.
Okay. It doesn't mean that we don't want the rescue squad.
Part of this exercise is to identify all of those moments.
A lot of land around that that we own too. I mean, I was looking at that the other day when I was driving past it and realizing what it looks like on, that used to be the tennis courts over there and. Anyways. Looks, it was daylighted, right?
So the good news is council's gonna get a lot of information at some point in the future. There are time and place to be determined.
I'm trying to put out a lot of fires, I can't get them all, but I'm trying.
But it's coming, yeah, that's fair.
It's coming, yes.
We're heading in the right direction.
Yeah, that's great, you know, it's a good conversation, it, it is great.
It's helpful.
All right, so we got some more time, folks. Over on economic development, we're going hot and heavy here.
I would offer just, um, just a reflection on economic development, just that this conversation in my mind is very helpful. Just as we interact with Chris specifically, um, it'll, it'll help to inform his approach to how we do it. Because hearing council talk about it, in my mind informs us on, and what else should we be doing? Or maybe we should do this a little bit differently, um, so I, I, I have a lot that I will follow up with him on. Um, specifically, just even though he's not in my portfolio, but just because I've done some of this stuff before, but hearing council speak to. What some of their concerns are, it takes a different approach than just the more traditional economic development office. There's a whole grassroots element to economic development as well, and it was touched on, but, um, interacting with, um. Our friends on the downtown mall takes a special skill set to do some of that work sometimes. And it is not the traditional economic development person who's all about striking deals and making investments. There's a nuance to that, and I think that's part of what we can explore, how we can do some things about that.
Excellent points.
Yeah, I would like to bring up one more time the network program, PBCC, I. Maybe Michael knows more about this or, or Juan, but, um, it seems like a fantastic program, it seems like it works. Uh, I know we guess we have something called a GO.
We're on opportunities.
Yeah.
Yeah, within the city, and I think that's, that's fantastic, but I, I really, um, I don't like seeing duplication of effort and, um. I don't know, do we have any connections formally with that program?
Yeah.
Yeah, I sit on the board, that, that's the, um, with the, uh, uh.
Workforce.
Yeah, workforce development, network to work as part of that, PBCC is part of that.
I think, I think one of, at least to my mind, one of the most immediate and relevant things is just that the, um. At least to my understanding, the, the, the staff member who had, um. You know, really developed and grew those programs and initiated a lot of them is no longer with us, so it's just sort of who steps in to fill their shoes.
So the connections formally are there, but it's more about getting a new person in or.
Yeah, but there's definitely a very strong foundation to, you know, maintain and grow.
And Councilmember Pinkston, um, I have contact with Mr. Schuler, um, and as, I'm going to make sure that he comes before council. To present the next iteration of the Orange Dot Report, which will be in the fall, we've already spoken about this.
Right.
And Roy Fitch, who runs our downtown job center, is also connected with Mr. Schuler. I, I actually, along with our entire Home to Hope program, they are all navigators for the, um, network to work program, so. While the, um, the leadership level individual who was doing a lot of that amazing work is no longer with the organization. Those two programs have continued to keep a very strong bond and connection, and I've made sure that I've fostered a connection. Um, with Mr. Schuler specifically. um, to make sure that we, we keep that moving forward. So, um, again, while the, while an individual who had that kind of as their priority work um, is no longer with us, there are other individuals, um, I'm pointing back there because that's where they sit, sorry, um, who are still working very closely with that and doing a lot of good, uh, work with uh, trying to connect our community with good paying jobs that can move them in the path they would like to move.
That's excellent. Thank you.
Workforce, business retention, sitting on properties and facilities, connectivity with in, internal, external partners and community, I read.
Again, I mean, I think the, um, community wealth building framework is important. And I know Richmond, Virginia, Oakland, California, a lot of cities have, Brunton, Vermont have like offices of community wealth building, um, and really look at things like co-ops, community development corporations, community land trusts as being part of that conscious strategy.
Yeah, I worked at the City of Richmond's office, or their staff, yep.
We have, we also just wanna bring up, um, we, we have a good partnership with the Community Investment Collaborative. It's a nonprofit that works with training people on how to either open their own business, make their own business more stabilized or expand their own business. Um, and it also does a, uh, it's a sixteen-week course and it's a support network as well. Um, and I mean, they just, they do a lot of really good work.
It's, it sounds like to me with just economic development in general, and, and some of this to be addressed, I think, in some staff reports to you guys, it'll be your presentations will be coming in the future to give you guys a chance to really dig into this. To me, it seems like we're, we, this organization, the city is in a place of let's, let's unearth everything that is, that's been going on, that's, that's maybe some things are active, some things are not. Take an evaluate, a, a true evaluation of all these things and, and you guys open seven policy standpoint, a budget standpoint, where do we wanna focus? Investment, yeah, cause that's what it comes down to, what you, you, you budget your priorities. So it sounds like there's a, there's an awful lot of things going on. It's just a matter of sort of connecting the dots to me and making sure that staffing and everything else and relationships are there. Ever, over some points of this, this topic that we, we've not touched before we maybe wrap up this evening or uh, and I'll, you know, I'll just sort of, I'll close down and we'll, um, talk a bit about tomorrow.
I think beyond what is UVA's plan, and I know that this was already stated, but just not just what is UVA's plan, but how can we effectively partner with UVA? Um, because they're here, they're here to stay and how do we come forward to UVA and work with a mutually beneficial opportunity?
There, there are several levels of working relationships. So Sam is working with his counterpart, you know, um, at the county and, and, and university on a number of planning app activities. Uh, uh, Jeff Richardson and, and I uh, meet with J.J. Davis and, and Collette on a number, number of, of issues. And, and the mayor and the, uh, the chairman of, uh, uh, the county commission and, uh, we'll be meeting with the, with them to discuss some more confidential, you know, kind of thing. So I think at those three levels, there's a making of, of, um, uh, being able to build a, a, uh, better relationship. I, I think that acknowledged that it kind of got off course in, over the last, last several years and, and, uh, they're looking to get back on course so that we have a, a, a smooth working relationship. And I think those three entities, uh, three levels can, can help, uh, help do that.
So I just wanted to tag on to that is that, you know, before I decided to run for council, I was co-chair, President Ryan had this university community working group and, and I'm not no longer co-chair, but I'm still part of the committee and it's kind of evolved. And now we have reports, one of which was the housing report, which suggested the fifteen hundred units. Another one is, is, um, health and they're working with that. But one that's more pertinent is, is pathways to, um, pipelines and pathways is really talking about working with individuals in the community, different things that the university can, can do. So they're, they're definitely looking into that, certainly more that they can do, but they have, this issue has been thought of, you know, by this committee and other members of the community. And we have members of the community that, um, that are on this committee. I'm thinking of many of them. We've heard from during the whole discussion of the schools and affordable housing, really active members that have a voice in their community. Um, but, um, now they're putting, they, they just submitted, reported just a few weeks ago. And so they're working on implementing, so there's definitely more dialogue going on around this whole subject, so I'm happy to hear that.
All right. Um, let's just, let's, uh, talk a little bit about tomorrow and sort of wrap up for this evening. I think we're at a pretty nice stopping point here. Um, first, I just wanna thank all of y'all. This has been a really good conversation and I hope it's been good for you just to actually have it. And in person nonetheless, which is always nice, right? Uh, and I appreciate staff support and feedback. That's, that's really some critical to all of this. Um, some of the things that I, I'd like you to think about that we're gonna talk about some tomorrow before we really finalize our priorities. Regional partnerships, uh, nonprofits, other government entities, local governments, counties that surround the city. Um, you know, Charlottesville is the, the regional hub. Uh, and, you know, we, we wanna talk about those relationships as well. Um, and that's also mean everything from transportation and other things, it may not be exactly in suburbs that are obviously of interest, uh, to year olds residents, right? And the same thing for economic development, workforce development, right? People drive, people commute, all those good things. So let's talk a little bit about regionalism tomorrow. Um, it makes you, uh, feel good when you look at the existing strategic plan that you guys have. You've covered every single one of these goals in some way, shape or form this evening through our conversations, uh, at a very high level, which is good. So I think you've had a really good robust conversation, so I appreciate that. My other homework is just, what, what else have we not talked about that you guys would like to have a conversation of in this setting? Cause this is obviously again, a rare opportunity for y'all to do this. When you don't have an agenda of thirty different things you gotta prove. Um, so just think about that and I'd say thing for staff. What other feedback have we not touched on that you'd like to get before we walk out here tomorrow? So is there anything else from council that you'd like to share with us?
Could you reiterate specifically the homework?
Um, what have we not talked about that is important to you and important to the organization? Um, partnerships?
Hold on.
I'm sorry, please take your time. We talked about a little bit with UVA, uh, and we said to work county, I think twice, that we probably ought to explore that concept a little bit further tomorrow, I think.
Um, so as far as the partnerships, do you want us to be listing them? Do you want to talk about the state of them?
I think it's sort of like what we did today. Um, do you have questions about them? You know, are there some things that you've not dealt with yet because of the pandemic? I think that's an honest question because we've had so much chaos to manage. Uh, there's not been time to really reflect on these issues and their core important issues, but and this is not a, this is a negative comment to you, council, this is just the nature of the beast we've all had to deal with, so.
You mentioned nonprofits, that's, that, that's an area, an area of fertile discussion.
Yeah.
That we want to, uh, key in on, I think.
That's critical to, that's critical to your budgets in the future. Uh, that's critical to, um, large part of these programs, they go on development and, and involve other people besides city staff and city council, right?
And contracted agencies is another area that we should, should discuss. Anything else?
And then I'll just, I'll hold some time tomorrow for us to talk about miscellaneous items that come up, uh, for both council and staff. Sir?
Um, mission, well, let's say vision, mission, values of the organization. Um, a very powerful vision statement. I mean, we can look at the one we have, but I think that new council, new times coming out of COVID. Uh, statement, an addition statement that would collectively where the council wants to take the city. Uh, it's, it's something that I'd like to see us address.
I just have this vision of like hover cars.
Are you announcing your, your campaign for reelection and dealing with hover cars?
Yes.
It's been a long day, you know?
It has been, it's been a very long day.
All right. Council, thank you.
Thank you.
Really appreciate your time and your, your work today. It's been very helpful. Really good start. Staff, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll see you guys. We'll, we'll come back together ten o'clock tomorrow morning. And we will go as long, only as we need.
Okay.
Okay.
Great. Dismissed.
Tomorrow?
We're adjourned.
Recent, adjourned, whatever the appropriate term.